Illegal, go ahead, Morrison.
Dr. Shoemaker?
Here.
Mrs. Gaines?
Here.
Mrs. Bowlen?
Here.
Dr. Flowers?
Present.
Mr. Larry?
Yeah.
Mr. Phelan?
Here.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Next item on the agenda is a moment of silence, Mrs. Gaines.
Madeline Lenz of Framingham passed away on October 26, 2014. She is survived by her son David Lenz and his wife Patricia, Rogers High School Clerk Typhus. Patrick C. Loftus of Newport passed away on Wednesday, October 29. He was the son of Garrett and Kathleen Torrescenta Loftus, Newport Public Schools retired teacher, the sister of Meg Loftus and her brother-in-law Raleigh Brennan, Rogers High School Dean of Students, the nephew of Brian Torrescenta Thompson Middle School Social Studies teacher, and Robert Torrescenta Newport Public Schools retiree, and the grandson of Charles Torrescenta Underwood School Retired Principal and the late Kathy Kitty Torrescenta Rogers High School Retired School Nurse Teacher. Kathleen Kathy Grace Weaver of Middletown passed away on Sunday, November 9, 2014. She is survived by her brother Kevin Weaver and his wife Mary Shan, Pell Elementary School's social worker, and her sister Jacqueline Torrescenta and her husband Robert, a Newport Public Schools retiree.
A moment of silence, please. Thank you. Next item is public comment. I knew we have somebody. Mr. Bernstein, you want to?
Thank you for listening. I'd just like to make a public comment about the move at Pell of a music teacher from his dedicated music room to shared facilities in a room with the other music teacher. This is to facilitate or to help the special ed program which has a need, which I don't argue the point. In fact, I support that they have this need. I would like to speak about the needs of the music program, though, and the students that it serves. Scott and Larry service four or five grade levels of students each day at Pell in addition to car strings and pre-K once a week in Middletown. They're very organized and utilize their rooms in a very productive fashion using the risers, the open spaces, smart board, recording devices, and instruments. They also use multiple assessments, including recording student performances, video assessments, and written evaluations. Their schedules never have the same grade levels following concurrently, but in order to accommodate common planning at Pell, they each teach a different grade level each period of each day. Although not addressed contractually, each grade level has a different curriculum and lesson with different materials and room setups, et cetera, needed. When in a dedicated classroom, this is not a problem as all the materials are readily at hand and their rooms are set up for their instruction. But when traveling on a cart, this becomes problematic as the classes are not only in different locations in the building, but on different levels as well. Since the stage is used by after-school activities, outside programs, recess, and city council meetings, they cannot store the instruments, furniture, et cetera, on it for the limited use they would have on the stage, but only use the space. Students will also receive less instructional time due to setup and breakdown of movement from class to class, sometimes having to go up and down different levels and across the upper school to lower school. My suggestion for a best next alternative would be to move Scott to the stage as a dedicated music room similar to what the band room slash music room at Thompson is used for. It would then no longer, of course, be available for use by other groups, activities, recess, et cetera, without working out such use in advance. My feeling being that a curricular program should trump activities in the school. Some of our strongest feedback from the community when we were selling the school referendum was the dedicated music and art rooms, and we're now into our second year at Pell and this no longer seems to be the case. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Do you want to address that?
No. I, well, I can only say that after pushing a cart and teaching from a cart, not just from room to room, but from school to school, I appreciate the problems that it poses. And this is not a permanent solution.
Yeah, I think if people don't know all the background, Pell School, the size of Pell School was dictated by this Department of Education. And subsequently, our enrollment has, I can't say double, but enrollment has increased significantly. So we've run out of space over there. So we're looking for alternatives, and one of them happens to be the stage, which is in conflict with the music people. So we hear you. We're not, we don't, we do not like this compromise that's been made.
Not at all.
But we, I think, I hear the superintendent whisper, "We're going to take care of it."
Mr. Chairman, are we making comments about this?
Sure.
I don't think we can. I would love to make a comment.
You should.
Okay, then I support you 100 percent. My comment.
Absolutely.
I'd like to make a comment, too.
Yes, Ms.?
I'm sure some of you are aware that Pat Kelly and I headed up a group last year because we realized, this was two years ago, that this problem was coming. And we headed up a large, it was a mixed group of teachers, community members, and I will tell you, every one of them said, the overwhelming thing was, do not, because we knew that there was going to be a shortage of space. And we could also see predicted, despite Whitehall predictions that we were going to continue to go down, we realized that enrollment was going up. And so we came up with alternative plans, and I'll tell you, they didn't involve using the music room. We had asked then that we put, and it's not a very good alternative either, but to put, you know, portable buildings. So, but I'm just going to tell you that right now, we're going to have to come up with a plan between now and the end of the year because we're opening up new housing. And if it continues, we're going to have to have another plan for next year. So I'm upset about this, too.
Yes, Superintendent.
So I just want to share with the public and with the committee that no one likes this arrangement, including myself. We did look at every other space in the building, and we did look at every other opportunity we could somehow move other activities, and it was not feasible nor doable to the overall population in teaching and learning. Principal Bean and her staff and her administrative team have met with Mr. Bernstein and have discussed and reviewed this. None of us like this option. We don't have any other choice at this point in time. The number of students that have needs that must be met and the growing population at the early ages have required that we had to think of some way to reshift our students and put them in a place where their services could be delivered in a setting that was appropriate for the services that were being delivered, and also to allow the adults to have the instructional opportunities when needed and when available. The unfortunate thing is at times, especially with some of our students, it's not predictable when the service or the room is needed. We do know for sure some of that time, but we don't know all of it. And in order to provide and cause less disruption during the instructional day, including with music and art, we knew we needed to have a place that would meet the needs of this diverse community. We do have to think about the future and what we're going to do going forward because, as Mr. Bernstein knows and the committee knows, I'm a strong advocate of the arts, especially the music, and we need to keep expanding the program as we are doing now. What alternatives we have, I'm not sure are clear at this time, but we do know that right now it's on the drawing board and we're trying to figure out a way to address this. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll move on to item number 3.1, Student Council Update. Catherine Hermes?
The first quarter ended last week, and winter sports will soon be starting. But first, we'd like to congratulate all the fall sports for such strong seasons that they've had this year. Both the freshman football team and the varsity football team made it to the playoffs this weekend. Though we were defeated, the Vikings did play very hard, and we were very proud of them. The Cedar, Roger Cedar Company held auditions for the spring musical Legally Blonde this past week, and they're waiting to your back for the cast, and then they'll begin practicing for the spring musical. Last week, there was a Veterans Day Assembly held at Rogers, and they hope to continue this tradition each year to honor our veterans, and it was, I think, very successful for the community. Parent-teacher conferences are to be held this week, and students are looking forward to their Thanksgiving breaks and are very happy to have Wednesday off this year. And we look forward to meeting our new principal in the next couple of weeks or months. And all students are very grateful for having both Mr. Foley and Mr. Morano this year so far, and they would just like to extend their gratitude for them for helping out so much. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, Mrs. Gaines?
Catherine, I'd just like to commend you and your partner Carly for that program, the veterans on the 11th.
Thank you.
Of the 10th. It was thoughtful, it was well-planned, it was perfect. And I said to the superintendent that we should make that annual. I know it was part of your senior project, but if you could leave that script.
Yeah.
It's something that should be repeated, and I'd like to see more veterans there. I think they would have been thrilled to have seen that. Just marvelous.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Go to item four. I have four things down here, but I only have one in my book, so you'll have to bear with us a little bit. The first one is recognition of the girls' soccer, good sportsmanship recognition. This is Bowlen.
All right, I'm going to speak very briefly about this. Go ahead.
I'm just going to speak very briefly about this. I don't know, about a month or two, and unfortunately, I didn't get to stay or see any of your games. Some days, when I had to go to meetings, I had to stand on the top and look down at you and watch you run back and forth. So I just want to say, I promise I will get there for more than 20 minutes next year. But I want to, I just want to say that one of the things that struck me was an article in the Daily News, and I know as a Viking myself that Rogers takes pride in how all our students exemplify the school, the community, and what we believe in. And I was very impressed to read the article about your sportsmanship in one particular game. And I will share with you that that article probably, I had the most feedback when I walked around the community about your behaviors and how Rogers High School Soccer Girls, the good sportsmanship you displayed. And everything and anything in life, you're not always going to get what you want, but it's always how you conduct yourself and how you handle the situation that determines the quality about you and whether you are a unique, strong, and respected individual. And I believe, from what I've read in the article, from the brief times, I will say, standing on top and just looking down, watching you running all over the place over there, back there, and hearing the yells, that you've conducted yourself in such a way that the whole community, I felt, should understand and know that, and you should be recognized. I also, I also want to thank the coaches as well because as a coach, and as a former coach, and as a coach, I know that's one of the key things. Team members do and follow by example, and it's the coaching and the mentoring from the adults that makes the big impression for them. Now, I recognize one person back there. I know he's a Noons. I can tell by him. I went to school with his brothers. And I will say, I'm sorry, I don't know all the coaches' names. And so if you'd like to, you're not one of the coaches. All right, the coach, I figured over here, I recognize you from the field. If you'd like to join Mrs. Bowlen, maybe, up at the stage.
Girls, can we have the first?
And Mrs. Bowlen's going to say something also. Thank you.
First, let's have the coaches come up. All the, because as, because as Mrs. Germain said, and she said a lot of what I was saying, so I'm not going to repeat it, but it starts from the top down. And the example you set is what, you know, the girls pick up on and what they, you know, show on the field. So that's great. Next, can we have the captains come up? All right? You know, I'm sure you've been on that field for how many years now? Except for year, year, and yeah, four of them. And, you know, the captain sets the stage of the, you know, everybody's attitude. And I know that a captain job is not always easy. You've got to solve problems, you know, be the peacemaker, but you've obviously done an incredible job and very proud of you. And now, let's have all the members of the team come up. Girls, why don't you stand in front of us so the camera gets you? And I'm going to present this to, this is good sportsmanship for demonstrating excellent behavior on the field. And I'll hand this to the team captain. You want to take it on behalf of your team? And I just want to say, nothing probably makes this school committee happier than to have, to give out this kind of award because, you know, you can have great athletes, but to be able to do this and show, and be recognized as having, you know, incredible behavior and sportsmanship on the field, it makes us incredibly proud. So, thank you very much, and. Did you want to read their names?
I'm going to read them.
For the TV. Yeah, all right, I will read the names then. I should have had, and I'm going to have you stand right next to me. Is it, Cadisia Stubbs? Maeve Byrne, raise your hand. Aleah Jones?
Raise your hands.
Hi.
Yeah, okay. Juliana, she's not here tonight, right? Megan Ramston? Beatrix, is she here? Nope. How about Sarah Morris? Nope. They have homework tonight. Kate Russell? Zoe Clure? Kaylee Palmer? I saw her. Kaylee Butler? Morgan Lang? Haley Kennedy? Elizabeth Murphy? Roxanne Breton? Olivia Noons? Riley Murphy? Hannah Montgomery? Kalen Schuster? And Hannah Davis, team captain. All right, you're dismissed. Thank you, girls. Keep up the good work. Thank you.
Congratulations.
The second award is to the Teachers Association. Teachers Association of Newport. Mr. Kimes, who is the president, could not make it tonight, so, but this is, if you want to know how language is being structured, it's because I'm supposedly presenting it to him. It's the American Education Week proclamation. Whereas public education is the backbone of our democracy, providing young people with the tools they need to maintain our nation's precious values of freedom, civility, and equality. And whereas by equipping young Americans with both practice skills and broader intellectual abilities, schools give them hope for and access to a productive future. And whereas public education employees, be they educators, substitute teachers, custodians, teachers, social administrators, bus drivers, clerical workers, food service professionals, health and student service workers, or librarians, work tirelessly to serve our children and community with care and professionalism. Whereas public schools are the foundations of neighborhoods and communities, bringing together adults and children, educators and volunteers, business leaders, and elected officials in a common purpose. Now, therefore, I, as Charles Shoemaker, serving as chairman of the school committee, do hereby proclaim November 16 to 22, the year 2014, as the 93rd Annual Observance of American Education Week. And in lieu of Mr. Kimes, I'll ask the superintendent to come forth and accept the proclamation.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
We have the teachers.
Stay here, stay here.
Oh, no, there's someone here.
Oh, there is. Council 94, is there?
Yes.
American Education Week proclamation. I'm not going to repeat all the whereas's we went through before, but now I'm coming down to, therefore, I, Charles Shoemaker, serving as chairman of the school committee, Newport, Rhode Island, do hereby proclaim November 16 to 22, the year 2014, as the 93rd Annual Observance of American Education Week. Who else is up, Mrs. Gaines?
Not yet.
Donation next.
I don't think anyone's here.
Anybody here representing Mrs. Fannenskiel?
All right, so we can, we should put that off till the next meeting.
All right.
I have three awards to be presented to three people who have worked diligently the last two years. The last, how many?
Thirteen and some.
Thirteen plus. And the last 14 plus. Is it 14 or 12?
I think it's 12.
12, okay. So, let's start with Bob Power, since he's got the fewest number of years.
I have years, and they cut me off by a month.
Would you come forward, please? You are receiving an educational award in recognition of your dedication and service to the Newport Public Schools and its children. As Newport School Committee Member, 2013, 2012?
Yeah.
No, 2013 to 2014. But it's really 2015. So you get credit for two years. We'll miss you. Dr. Shoemaker? The reading is the same, except for the years, 2005 to 2014. You've been a dedicated servant, and we'll miss you. You should wait till the end of the meeting. I don't want it yet. Tom Phelan. Now, this says 11 through 14, but we know that's not right.
I'm off and on.
Off and on for a long time.
Long time.
Since 1997. So you definitely take the cake for being the longest servant.
Most losing too.
No.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I would like to say a few comments on behalf of all three of you. I'm sure other people will, too. What I want the public to really recognize here is that the friendships that develop over the years with people on the committees, when you're at this table conducting business here, we're 100 percent in business. When we're not at the table, business is forgotten and friendships develop. And it's important to note that I still see people I served with 10 and 12 years ago as committee I go to dinner with. There's people I get calls every year I run for elections that say, "Put a sign in my yard, please, to be honored, to have a past committee members," you know? So, and I know, no matter how, whatever side of aisle you're on this side of the table, and on different sides of this table, some people are conservative, some people not so much, there's a friendship that exists off this table permanently. And I know you're going to be calling me to go sailing, Charlie, but just don't do it in February. Bob Powers and I, people would never think we'd be friends, but we've become, developed more friends over the years, the last two years, and Tom's always been a friend. So I want to thank all three of them, and myself, you know?
Bobby, thank you very much.
Thank you, Bobby.
Anybody else? The three of you should know that Bobby's friendship goes beyond just shaking hands and going sailing. He's preparing a dinner for you guys. Not with his own hands. But he is arranging, making the arrangements for dinner in December. And we will honor you and welcome our new members as well. So it's going to be a party.
Good. Well, thank you.
All right, and I just, for those of you that don't know, this got sped up very quickly. You have, and we're still waiting momentarily, they may come in the door. We're waiting, we have three vests. They look like this. But they say Vikings on it. So you'll always be a Viking. They're on their way. I think they're in transit. And for the public, this got moved up a full month, so we had to put a rush on it. So they're on, they're on their way. So thank you very much. I just want to thank you all. I know you're the committee that hired me, and I promise I will make you proud. I will remember the messaging you've given to me. I will hope to prove to some of you that things can be done. And I'm very grateful for being here in Newport. So thank you. It's been a pleasure working with you. And as you've all stated, when we do business, not all of you agree, but I respect the way you've come to work with one another, share each other's thinking with one another, and do it in a civil way. So thank you.
I'd like to thank all three, so let's give them a clap.
I've got a big problem now. Do I wear the pelt vest or wear the Viking vest?
There you go. Depends on where you are. Yeah, you'll be red and black.
Item 5.1 is a report from RIDE concerning, it's called UCOA, which is, which is one.
Unified Chart of Accounts.
There you go.
Uniform.
Uniform Chart of Accounts.
Glad you have it.
All right. Thank you, Joan. All right. Is the one that's on here the updated one? Did you get updated on the?
They're both on there.
Both of them should be on there.
It says revised.
It says revised.
All right. So, thank you. I will introduce tonight, we have Cynthia Brown here. She's the Director of Statewide Efficiencies. And she's here today, and I want to thank her personally. I know how busy she is up there, and I know she has a million things to do. And she did promise, if you remember, back in the spring, she did what data she had. She was able to give us the uniform chart of accounts with the data she had. I believe what we're looking at tonight will be 12 or 13 data. 13 data. And RIDE is even, Cynthia and her group are working on the 14 data, so. But I thought this would be a good overview, considering this is the month of November. We did want to start planning our budget for 2016 earlier than in the past, and just set a foundation. So I'm going to let, Cindy, I'm going to let you take over from here?
Okay.
Okay, yeah, you are going to need to be at the microphone, the cameraman's saying. All right?
Okay. Well, thank you very much. It's exciting to be able to come out and talk to a school committee about your data. I'm sure that within your own district, you have plenty of people that can talk to you about it as well. And we publish, everything you're going to see here tonight is actually published on our website, so you can access it at any time. What we did was kind of organize it for you and pull out a few facts and figures to go over with you. So this is certainly not going to cover everything and answer every question you have, and we know that, and you would be here. And we know that, and you would be here for a very long time if we were going to do that. And I know you have a full agenda, so I'm going to move through it quickly. But I will say, if you have follow-up questions, feel free to direct those through the superintendent, get them to us. We are happy to answer any follow-up questions you have, okay? So we'll take questions tonight, obviously, but if there's other information you need, something that you saw that sparked, you know, a further question, happy to look into that and assist you. Stu, let's see if I've got this right. Okay, so what is UCOA, the Uniform Chart of Accounts? Basically, this goes back, we're now in our sixth year operating across the state under the Uniform Chart of Accounts. It took a few years to develop, but it was legislated by the General Assembly, because they were looking for good, solid financial data from school districts in the state, and they wanted it to be transparent, they wanted it to be comparable from district to district, and even within a district from school to school. So in order to do that, they charged RIDE and the Auditor General with actually developing a uniform chart. It was the first time Rhode Island's had one. We've had uniform reporting, but that's not the same when you get down to the lowest level of detail. So, basically, it standardizes how folks account and the numbers they use to account for information. Both, everything from the dollars coming into a district to the dollars leaving a district and going out, or being spent. So, using that information then, it gives users tools to identify variances. And that's what we're going to be talking about tonight, is just looking at some of the variances from district to district to give you a quick snapshot. And I've only done a selection of districts for you that have some comparable statistics, but you could look at any district in the state and see the same information. And then, this is really intended to become so user-friendly that when you're making decisions, when you're budgeting, you're able to go in and use this data. So we hope to get everyone to the point where they feel comfortable with it. Some of it right now, it's a little clumsy, because it's published in a big Excel database, or we've published some statistical tables for you. We are actively working on a way to make it more user-friendly for folks right now, and we hope to have something ready by the fall. So that's, that is in active development, because we know that it has to be friendly, easy to use if you're going to use it for all of your decision-making. So we're working on that. What I would like to do is I'm going to share the communities for you, and then I think I want to toggle over to some supplemental slides I brought with me this evening to show you some of the statistics about those communities. So when I say that we've used them for comparison purposes, you'll understand where they're similar to you and where they may not be. So, like communities selected for this are the same ones, if you saw the presentation we provided last year, we used Bristol Warren, Johnston, North Providence, and West Warwick. And you might look at those and say, "Really? Some of those really don't feel like they're the same as Newport." But again, I'm not sure any community is identical to the one beside it or somewhere in the state. What you're looking for are some of the demographics that might be comparable. So I'll show you some of those demographics. And then, we also provided both Portsmouth and Middletown as your neighbors. So while they may be somewhat different in their demographics, it's good to know what your neighbors are doing too. So, Osiris, if you wouldn't mind toggling on the desktop to that second... Presentation two? Should be open and minimized? And if you could just blow that up? Okay, so just in terms of those communities, we want to look at their 13 statistics to see how are they or aren't they like Newport? So generally, we're looking at membership. So that's your student attendance over the course of a year. The number of IEPs, so in this case, the full-time equivalent IEPs. So that's all the, if a student only gets an hour of service a week, that little piece of service in every district is added up in your district to get an FTE. The same thing for English Language Learners, the ELL statistic, and then Free and Reduced Price Lunch percentage. So if you look at that, you'll see places where Newport's numbers are somewhat smaller, lower than others. But if we look at, let's say, Free and Reduced Price Lunch, you're not going to find a perfect comparison, but if you look at, say, Portsmouth and Middletown, with Newport sitting at 62.2% in fiscal year 13, in terms of the poverty level of a district, you're not like Portsmouth or Middletown. Right? So that's important to know when you're comparing information. There are things that, that might be needed in your community that aren't an absolute need in another community, perhaps. So you need to look at all of this statistical information together, and I'm happy to provide this, these supplemental slides to you as well.
That'd be great, if we could have those.
Another thing I want to just preface the data you're going to look at by saying is that when UCOA came in, there were places where there were separate checkbooks for the lunch fund, and then, you know, athletics might have a checkbook over here, and another class might have a checkbook over there. What UCOA did was it brought all sources of funding supporting schools into one place. So now, everything has to flow through the books of the district. So what does that mean? That means all your federal dollars, Title I, IDEA, you name it, all your state dollars, your property tax dollars, any miscellaneous receipts a district might get, and then even any private dollars that you get. So if you, someone in your district got a $100 Walmart donation, that $100 Walmart donation is also accounted for in the data. So all money coming into a district and all expenses going out of a district.
And that includes NACTEC?
The vocational census?
Yes.
Core and tech, yes.
Okay.
It does. That's a school of your district.
Cindy, how about the pre-K?
Pre-K running in your current program, or?
Yes.
If you have pre-K program in your district now, it would include that as well. Alright, so some districts are running pre-K programs where students with special needs are in the population, and then they're receiving revenue for some other students. All of that would be in the data, right? Every dollar coming in, and that's true in every district of the state. Okay, so when we're looking at the data, you can't think of it as just your operating budget, it's all of your budgets. Right? Your grants budget, everything.
But Cindy?
Yes.
Doesn't that push up the cost per student?
But you're spending that. So would it increase when you're reporting out a per pupil cost? Absolutely, but aren't you spending those dollars on education?
Yeah.
Right.
But wouldn't it be closer related to, this is our per pupil spending, not our per pupil cost? Because we wouldn't be expending those dollars if they weren't, if they weren't grant money, or, you know? So there almost should be two numbers, and also, just so the public knows, the most blaring thing is the high school. No wonder our high school is so expensive, it's because we have a technical school here. And those numbers to put those kids in technical school, you know, is what contributes to having the highest-priced high school in the state. We have to somehow, I'm just challenging the you, the RIDE, to get those numbers out of there. You know, like, in other words, that maybe, no, that, it just because it looks like false data, you know? And so that, the NACTEC of all things should be maybe out of it.
And I can understand why you would say that, but you take in revenue for that as well. You have costs, but you take in revenue for it, and it is part of the education being provided to the students that attend in this district. So can it be isolated? You can absolutely see it. So because everything in UCOA is tracked to a specific location code, so if you wanted to see just the expenses and just the revenue for your Career and Tech Center, you could pull that.
Okay.
Easily.
Cindy, just, I'm sorry.
I was just wondering if any of these communities have half-day K? Does that skew anything?
It doesn't, because the, not only the dollars are reported that they're actually spending, but the student population is reported for those half-day students as well. So as they increase to full-time, the dollars obviously are going to increase, because now you're paying staff more time as well, you have more costs there.
Yeah, and we have full.
Right.
So, you're absolutely right, what you said about the Voc Tech Center. I couldn't find information for it, but I have 2012 in front of me, and we collected $641,000 from sending districts.
Right.
So we do get money for the kids being there, so it should be included in it. So with that said, Mrs. Ball, bring that up. Have you looked at the round monthly September issue for the last four years?
No.
Okay, so if you don't mind, take a look at it.
We talked about the cost of schools, the high schools.
Talk about the price of high schools.
I have seen that, yes.
Yeah, it makes it number one, year after year, about $20,000 per people. It doesn't seem to come close in here, your numbers, I don't get it.
And I'm not sure where they're pulling the data either, so.
That's what I said.
Unfortunately, they don't come and ask.
I will call you, give you time to look at that and see.
Absolutely. Yes, I'm assuming that they're working with somebody in the data office on that, but I don't know that, and we will check that, for sure. Okay, so I did want to share those statistics with you and the fact that this is all-inclusive. And then, one of the questions that had come to us was whether or not of the districts we're using in the presentation today, are any of them full Title I districts? So I will say that if by that question, you're asking if any of them have all Title I participating schools? No, none of these districts have every school participating as a Title I school. So what you have is a mix, right? Some districts have, all elementary schools would be school-wide, and some have, some are, and some are targeted. So it's a, it's a mix. And you would have to actually look on a school-by-school basis at their Title I spending, which you could see, because it's tracked by the funding source, to actually see how they're spending Title I dollars. And another question was whether or not the per pupils that we are publishing includes the Career and Tech Center, and yes, they do. They're inclusive of all of your, not only your schools, but your central office, education and business services as well. Okay, so, why don't we go ahead and toggle back to the PowerPoint itself, if you don't mind? Okay, so we talked about comparison communities. Ooh, dear. Okay, so you all have copies, I hope, okay? Because I'm seeing that that blue and green are not jumping out very well here. Okay, so what we did was we followed a format similar to the data that we've provided in the past. And the blue and the green are basically saying, if the number is blue in your community or any other, it means that you're spending less, it's decreased over fiscal 12. If it's green, it increased over fiscal 12, and you will see a few places throughout where it's black. And that's because it stayed the same, okay? But there are very few of those. So overall, what we've done here is to show the statewide weighted average, okay? The suburban average, and the urban ring average. So what's an urban ring? Okay, so urban ring is actually something that's not widely used any longer. It was used a few years back when we started UCOA, and it really designated those communities that were not true urban communities, but weren't really a suburban. They had some characteristics of perhaps both in them. And so they were considered urban ring communities. For the most part, we only use that selectively now, because it's really not part of a formal nationwide classification in any of the mandatory types of reporting. So we want to kind of stay true to that, but for UCOA purposes, we were looking at some ways to group districts so that it makes it easier for you when you're trying to do comparisons. So we've maintained that urban ring designation, and right now, that's how we're classifying for UCOA purposes Newport. Okay, that may change in the future, but not until we really have something better that describes the community in a better way.
Who else is in there besides West Forward?
In the urban ring, we have, thanks for asking that, we have Cranston, East Providence, Johnston, North Providence, Warwick, and West Warwick. Those were the communities we classified as urban ring, and that the department, for the most part, was using when they were using that. Okay, so what we see here is we're looking at your expenditures by location. So not a particular elementary school in your district, but all of your elementary schools as a group versus your middle and high schools. And what we see here by location is that Newport is at 11, 866 per pupil expenditure for your elementary schools, and that's down. In fiscal 12, you spent $12,638 per pupil. Okay, that's not to say it's right or wrong. Nothing about UCOA, when you see numbers that are up-down, if you're above or below an average, it doesn't say that that's a good or a bad thing. What it says is, it gives you information to ask questions, it gives you opportunities to look for best practices, to say, "Well, we might be spending less, but if we're still getting results, maybe less is the right number for us." If you're not getting results, then maybe you want to look at how you're spending in other places and find a way to reshuffle those dollars if you need to, or to support a request for funds, right?
Just a clarification, these are 13, right?
These are 13, yes. And so, but I'm quoting you the 12 as well, because on mine, I kind of put those in there in case you needed to know that. So, it's, again, not right or wrong, it's information, it's digging deeper, asking questions. In your middle schools, you can see you're at 14. Last year it was 13, 271. But if we look at the suburban average and the urban ring average, it's not that out of line, but you have to ask yourself, "Well, what are we delivering there?" And is that, are we focusing our dollars at the middle school for a reason? And you might be. You might be trying to make some program improvements in a particular area. The high schools, in that one, again, higher, the prior year, you were at 15, 885. So that one's climbed, and you can see that it has climbed both on the statewide and the suburban average as well, and the urban ring average as well.
Cindy, are all middle schools the same grade levels?
Good question. So, are they all the same grade levels? They won't be. Okay, but, so a school can call itself a middle school, a high school, a junior high. What is the same about the numbers is that we have a required reporting that says, okay, so if you're up to grade six, you're tracking your costs as an elementary coding, and if you're seven and up, you're tracking your costs as a secondary coding. So there's no mid in there, but if my middle school, say, is five to eight, I'm actually showing it as a middle school, so it's coded here as a middle school, but my costs are actually, if you dig deeper into the data, you'll see, you can separate how much is elementary, five, six, versus seven, eight. You have to dig a little bit deeper into the data for that, but it's in there. But that's because, and the reason there's no preset is that RIDE does not have a standard designation for what is a middle school, what is an elementary school. These are representing the coding the district has applied, based on what they call their school. And there is no right definition for RIDE. And then we have the non-public private school by location. So those are costs that are leaving your district. And when I say leaving your district, what I mean is, even if you had a private or parochial school right here in your community, if it's not under your care and control, it's considered out of district, right? It's not something you're funding and you're in charge of, so it's out of district. So these are costs that you would be paying. Typically, what we see are tuition, if someone is going to, let's say, a special ed outside placement, or transportation to a non-public school. Any cost that's not picked up by the state already, has non-public transportation through our program. It might be non-public textbooks that you're providing, so that amount that you perhaps didn't get a full reimbursement on from the state. And then, under some of the federal programs like IDEA, you have some requirements for certain types of service under IEPs. So some of those costs might be showing up in here. And then, and that rose slightly over the prior year, you were at 1,004 in that instance. But you can see, if we look at this, you are above state suburban and urban ring for that spending. And then, central office is a combination of the locations that are considered central office. So what are they? They are the superintendent's office, education services, and the business office and all its associated services. So anything that's not a school. What we don't capture here as a central office, if you have a warehouse building, for instance, we wouldn't be capturing that cost here. That's in a different location, but I just pulled the key ones here for you. And that cost actually has dropped. Last year, you had 2,682 per pupil there, so that's actually dropped.
Cindy, before we go?
Yes.
Could you just go back to high school? Just, I just want to compare our high school to the suburban average. Just, I just want to compare our high school to the suburban average. The suburban average is pretty close to ours. It brings, brings into doubt what Bobby Leary was talking about, which was that study that was in Rhode Island or whatever magazine. We were way out of line, and yet, it looks like we're pretty close as far as the other suburban schools.
No, that, that's why he's asking her the question.
Right.
Yeah, I just, I just want to make that point, that I think.
Sure.
That, uh...
And, and here's one thing that, um, I should have mentioned earlier, and, and thank you for triggering that for me. Um, this represents your expenditures excluding debt and capital. Okay, so debt service and capital. Um, and we exclude those from all of our, um, presentations. We publish the data, but it's published separately. The reason we do that is for debt service, so, um, bonded debt for the most part. Um, in most of the districts around the state, that's carried on the town side, per the Auditor General. Okay, so that was cleaned up as part of UCOA to make it consistent. The only ones who don't are those who legally can't. So, those would be charter schools, because they don't have a resident district, right? Um, and regional school districts who, um, are charged with doing their own bonding. They don't have a city or town that does that for them. So, for them, they must carry it on their books, but we isolate it, and we don't want to distort the costs when we're comparing them. So, they're actually pulled out and kept in a separate database and published that way. Um, and then, capital project costs are the other ones. So, in, in many districts across the state, they are carried on the school side as well as the town side, and in some, it's only on the town side. So, because of that variance, and because the Auditor General hasn't required that all of those be moved at this time to either school or town, what we've done is extract them, so we're not distorting those costs. So, if we were to add those two figures in, we might very well get to that number, but we would want to look at the data to see that, because that's true total spending.
So, one thing, you said we're in the urban ring, not the suburban ring, correct?
Cur- currently, that's how we have you classified.
Okay, so we're in the thirteen thousand dollar high school one, not the sixteen thousand dollar high school one. There's comparison.
No, the, the thirteen one forty-seven is the urban.
That'd be the comparison.
Yes.
Yeah, so we're paying four thousand dollars more, basically.
Right. Okay. Um, so the next one, um, is to look at your data on a functional basis. So, within UCOA there, as there were in, inside our formal reporting, there are five very high-level functions that drill then all the way down to detail. But at the highest level, they are instruction, instructional support, operations, other commitments, and leadership. So, here, what we're seeing is instruction. So, within instruction, what you have are, um, all of those services that are direct to students. So, primarily, in this category we've pulled here, we have face-to-face teaching, so in the classroom, um, substitute teachers, because they're obviously replacing face-to-face teaching, um, paraprofessionals, so your instructional aides who assist students in the classroom. Uh, you also have instructional materials, field trips, and supplies, um, and pupil-use technology, which is all about the technology in a district as it applies to pupils. So, your, um, technology teachers and the cost of technology and materials that students use. So, that's all instruction.
Does that include special ed, parareducators, or that in a different category?
Yes, it would, as long as they are instructional aides for students. What is not in the instruction category are those paraprofessionals who serve as, um, toileting aides, personal care attendants for students. They're in another category, okay? So, this includes all of your special ed ones, regular ed, kindergarten, anywhere you might have aides for students who are in classrooms or helping teachers to assist students in classrooms. That's all a cost of instruction, okay? So, in this case, um, Newport does jump out a bit there at ten thousand one fifty-seven. That's not a bad thing. That means you're putting money into instruction, right? So, it's, um, it is higher than some of the averages, for sure. It actually is down over the prior year. In, um, the prior year, you spent ten thousand six forty-nine per pupil, okay? But again, it doesn't mean that spending more in instruction is a bad thing. Are you getting results? That's what you want to look at over time. Our next slide here is instructional support. So, that's going to include, um, let's see, staff development, right? So, um, assisting staff to deliver high-quality instruction, that professional development. It may include curriculum development, if there's work going on to change the curriculum being used or to modify it. Um, it will include guidance and counseling services for students, uh, library media services. Um, it will also include, um, the category where you see a lot of supports. Therapists, psychologists, social workers, personal care attendants. So, not necessarily just for special ed students or students with disabilities, but for all students. Um, and so, there are lots of those services happening, um, and that's a, a key part of this one, instructional support. Um, so, within instructional supports, you can see that Newport, um, rose two thousand six hundred and twenty-two, um, which, um, the prior year, it was two thousand two hundred and six. So, that was a pretty significant investment in instructional supports, an increase. Um, and, and, you know, hopefully, that's because you're putting resources into those direct services to students, right? So, coupled with instruction, those are your two key categories about, is the money going to classrooms? Is it going into schools, right? Because you're not going to see instruction and instructional support at central offices, for the most part. You're going to see it in schools.
Cindy, uh, race to the top funding, that's all-inclusive in this, correct?
It would have been, yes.
Thank you.
Yes. Okay, then our next category is operations. So, operations is everything that supports schools, but it's not necessarily a direct tie into the schools and students. So, what does that mean? So, things like food service, um, business operations, data processing, um, transportation, building utilities, maintenance, and upkeep, right? So, it's all about the structure and the environment students are in, but it's not about teaching, per se. But you need operations to run buildings, right? And feed students and get them to school and all of that. So, this is the cost that we're seeing here. So, um, Newport actually is down a bit from the prior year. Um, in, in fiscal twelve, you were at two thousand eight hundred and twenty-nine per pupil, and now, we see it at twenty-seven sixteen. And we can see that with some of the other measures, um, it's a bit higher. Um, and that could simply be the, um, population and the services that you're delivering. Doesn't mean it's a bad thing. It means that you need to think about, um, if you wanted to dig deeper into this, you'd take each of those categories, right? And you'd split them apart, and then look at each one individually. So, let me look at my buildings, right? So, you just went through a major building project, right? You closed schools, you opened schools. How much of that was in this data, right? So, you want to go back and look at that and see what was the timing of that and what did that mean? Um, if we look at your transportation, do you have a new contract in place? Did your new school result in extra transportation costs? Did you, um, uh, lower transportation costs by that? I don't know, but looking closer at the data will give you some of those answers, right? So, this is what it's intended to do, is say, "Hmm, it's a little higher. Wonder why? Let me look closer." And it's all there for you to be able to do that. Because obviously, the more you can, um, be sure that those areas are tight, the more money you have to put back into classrooms.
But it decreased, right, from last year.
It went down.
Yeah, it went down.
It went down slightly, yes, it did.
One thing that's always bothered me, whenever I looked at any of this data, was what does fiscal year thirteen mean?
Okay, good question.
And I, I, I wish RIDE would say year thirteen slash fourteen.
Okay.
So, you really know, because people get up and they talk about year fourteen, or they talk about thirteen, and they're not comparing apples to apples.
Right.
So, it, you know, it's, it's...
So, very good point, thank you. Um, what it means is, the fiscal thirteen is your twelve thirteen school year.
Year that's finished.
Yes.
Correct.
So, actually, two years. So, you've just finished thirteen fourteen. That's the data we're working on now.
But if they just put that in there, it would save a lot of...
It would, thank you. I will take that as a good suggestion. I can tell you, it does become confusing, because if you're in the financial world and you're talking about federal grants, that just might be the federal fiscal year, which is totally different. So, thank you for that suggestion. Okay, so then the next category, other commitments. And of course, Newport jumps right up on that one, okay? So, um, other commitments, what's in there? Uh, so, we have, if we had a combined data set we were looking at, in other commitments, you would see debt service and capital. So, we're not looking at a combined data set here. So, that's even a little scarier, right? So, what's in there? Um, what you have are enterprise programs. So, programs for which you might charge a fee. So, if you ran an after-school program and you charged a daycare fee for that, um, a program fee, you would see the enterprise program there. Um, a community service program would show there any cost for that. The biggest driver here, two drivers, retiree benefits. I know I'm not telling you anything you don't know, right? Um, but your retiree benefits compared to everybody else are off the charts, and you know that.
Yes.
Um, so, retiree benefits in this particular fiscal year were one thousand eight hundred and twenty-nine dollars of the per pupil. Right, so that's a hefty chunk, and I know you've made changes.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
One thousand eight hundred and twenty-nine dollars of your per pupil.
Okay, thank you.
Is going for retiree benefits. It's a lot of money, right? And so, you had commitments, and you've made changes moving forward, but it is going to take a significant amount of time for that to really take root and bring that cost down. So, what else is in other commitments? Any cost that would leave your, um, own schools for which you have an obligation. So, um, an example might be, um, you have pass-through costs of one thousand four hundred and ninety-two dollars in this particular illustration for fiscal thirteen. So, I picked out just a couple of the larger ones in there to give you an illustration. So, you have a hundred and ninety-eight thousand dollars, almost a hundred and ninety-nine thousand dollars in tuition costs for students attending the Met. Then you have about two and a half million for tuition, services, and transportation for students with disabilities who are in placements outside your schools. Um, then you have about another sixty-nine thousand for, um, transportation for students who are in private or parochial schools, in accordance with the law, right? Um, so, that, just, those are just three pieces that jump out when we look at your data set, and I'm sure if we kept looking, we would see some others. Um, but you can do that as well, just looking at your data. Those are costs that lots of districts look at very closely to see, um, the services they have in-house, um, who, where are students leaving districts to be sure, A, you're budgeting for it, um, and the, and then, what can you control of those costs, if any? So, you definitely want to dig deeper. Um, you've certainly made inroads with working on your retiree benefits, knowing that's been haunting you. Um, but that one's going to continue to be out there for a while, um, and before it's dropped significantly. So, again, drilling deeper into this will provide, um, greater information. And then, our next one, our last high-level function category, is leadership. So, and leadership is actually, um, as you can see here, it's not a dramatic swing from district to district. Um, what is leadership? So, leadership is your school management and your district management, and then your legal costs, essentially. So, your principals, assistant principals at a school level, and any of the staff that they have running school offices, and all of the costs with, associated with those offices. So, if it's copier costs, if it's paper, whatever it is, wages and benefits, that's all part of school-level, um, management costs. And then, your central level are going to be your superintendent, assistant superintendent, directors, um, senior-level folks, right? Um, their staff and any costs of running those offices. And then, um, coupled in with the superintendent's office costs are the school board. So, I don't know if it's your costs or not, but your costs are included too. Um, and then, the, the final piece is going to be your legal. Um, and I do have a slide on that that we can show you if we have time. Um, it's not particularly revealing, so you'll want to even go deeper than that to try to answer the question on why you might be different. Okay, so then, also within UCOA, another segment of the account is the detailed function level. Um, and so, that's just taking those high-level functions I talked about and drilling them a little bit deeper. So, in this first couple of rows, what you see here are instructional teachers, pupil-use technology, instructional materials. So, those are some of the subsets found in the high-level instruction. And it just gives you a way to go across and, and look at those and say, "Hmm, okay, so, I know where my instruction costs were. What about them is different when I look a little deeper?" Well, if you look at instructional teachers, you can see that that cost dropped. Um, for your district, it went from nine thousand two hundred and nine to eighty-seven twenty-three. Okay, again, doesn't mean that's a bad thing. You might have less teachers now. You might have renegotiated a contract. I don't know. You know. Um, but you'll want to look close, more closely at your data to see what that means. And if you look at that, comparing it to some of the other averages, um, you're still a little higher, and maybe that's okay, but you definitely want to just look deeper at it. Pupil-use technology, again, a, a slight increase, but not dramatic. It went from two hundred and sixty dollars, um, and that may have been a focus area for you. So, districts got wireless classroom initiative grants, right? If your district finished implementing in this year, or did some implementing in this year and got reimbursed, that cost would be here. Not sure the timing of that, but it could be. And it will happen across the state as well, but everyone's finishing in their projects at different points in time. So, where that appears, we'll begin to see an increase in that area. And then, um, instructional materials, um, you can see that, um, yours actually dropped. You were at two hundred and fifty-nine dollars per pupil in the prior year. Um, but there isn't dramatic spend, spending across the state in that area. If you look at all those other districts, we're seeing, and they're not huge numbers, right? So, folks are making do and, and squeezing that area where they can.
Cindy, could it be because there's more technology being used?
It absolutely could be.
Yeah.
Right, but then, you would expect to see some of those other areas go up. So, there are places, so if you're using, um, more technology for instruction, then you're going to see more licensing and things like that show up when you dig deeper, right? Because there's a cost on the other side too.
Yeah.
But it's not, perhaps not as, um, um, expendable as quickly.
So, if you get a grant, say, for technology, pupil-use technology, you get a grant.
Yes.
That's still, the cost, it's still going out even though you're spending the grant money?
Yes, absolutely.
Yeah, okay.
Yes, you're going to show the revenue coming in and the cost going out.
So, people say, "Look, this is what you're spending," but we can, if you say, if you dig down, you can see where it came from.
You can, you can, and you can actually, um, drill down into the data to say, "Of all of our revenue, how much, how much comes from private grants versus..." And then, even what, which private grant?
Oh, gee.
So, you can go all the way to, "Who gave it to you?"
Oh, gee.
Um, and then, curriculum development and staff development costs. So, and, and I think one of the questions that came to me was whether or not, um, if folks are using some Title I monies for staff development, that's here. Yes, it is, because it's all funds. And of course, there are limitations on how that can be used and for whom that can be used. But yes, if it were used, it would be reflected in this number. Okay, so just moving quickly, um, the next one, uh, sorry, therapists, psychologists, social workers. This is the one I referred to earlier. So, you have an increase in this area. Doesn't mean that's a bad thing. Um, you went from four eighty-one up to seven thirty-nine. But you can see that the numbers are, um, quite high across the state, and, um, there were increases in many districts. Uh, building upkeep, again, um, here, you dropped slightly from fourteen thirty to fourteen twenty-two. Um, still a bit high there, but that could be because you have, um, you have a new school on one side that probably hasn't taken quite root in this data yet, um, and yet, you have an older facility on the other end of the spectrum, right? Um, so, it'll just take time for that to show itself through your data. And then, you know, retiree benefits. You can see the eighteen forty-nine, which is down. The prior year, it was two thousand thirty. So, that's, that's a nice drop. Um, but compared to some of the other districts in there, it is staggering. And then, your legal costs, um, they also dropped from thirty-four to twenty-eight dollars per pupil. This is a very simple, high-level look, student transportation. So, these are all of your transportation costs, really knock that out of line with many of the districts. And that's going to be both your in-district and your out-of-district, all programs. So, can you isolate those costs by program in the data? Yes, you can. Takes a little longer, but you can pull it all by the program. Um, next one is tuitions, just to take a look at that. So, here, we see, um, your tuitions have risen, um, as did almost everyone's, right? Um, and some of that, I think, is the, the funding formula also went in. So, places like, um, Davies and Met, um, you know, those costs kicked in in twelve, as, as... and Met, you know, those costs kicked in in '12, as, as tuition costs. We're seeing more and more charter schools, and so all of those have costs associated with them, and that would be reflected in this section. Okay, supply costs, again, not a dramatic number. If we look here, it's down slightly from 183, but then you can see many other districts are as well, and that could simply be a factor of, you know, shrinking resources but actually using them differently.
Supplies, you're talking?
General supplies and materials, so that could be everything, right?
Off-keep and...
Yes. Yeah, so any, any supplies for any area, medical supplies, it's going to cover the gamut, office supplies. And then professional services is our next category. So that's really services that, if someone's not your employee and you're hiring in services, perhaps occupational therapy, and you're paying someone to do that who's not your staff member, that's a service. It could be auditing services that you have to pay for each year, or other professional services, technology could be one, bringing in a trainer, the cost of that trainer, all of that is captured here. So when you look at yours, it went up slightly from 592 to 647. We can see that some others changed as well, but you might want to look at that one more closely to see what actually is being spent there. And then job class is another segment of the account number, and sometimes looking at things by job class gives more information. So here we have aides and non-certifieds, that's a pretty big bucket, and it can be drilled deeper, but in this case, we're looking at it and saying, okay, so the costs are somewhat higher in Newport, so you might want to drill that a little bit deeper and say, what am I doing differently? We saw some of your supports go up, so it could be that you've put more aides in classrooms, more supports for students, not a bad thing. So it rose from 771 to 1,049. And then, looking at another job class, custodial services, we see that that one, too, has, it's actually gone down, it went down by a dollar per pupil. So not to get too excited, and that could be a factor of your different building structure, too. I don't know, you'll have to dig deeper, it could be benefit costs, almost anything in that category. And then facilities management, so this is going to be not the custodians, but the maintenance folks you have, who are providing service across the district. And so that one actually dropped from 144 to 130 per pupil. Okay, and then major program, because it's always important to look by program. So what we see here are four of the key program areas. Gen Ed, so that's the whole population, special education, career and tech, and ELL. And what we're looking at is your percent of budget spent by those major programs. So 65% of your budget is going into general education. If we look at the urban ring, it's right on target with the urban ring, right? In special education, you're actually a bit lower, and it hasn't, it's, let me see here, it stayed, it went down one percentage point over the prior year. So, and then career and tech stayed the same, so pretty consistent. It's actually a little bit higher than the urban ring, but then again, you have one school in your percent of budget, if we look at the ring, there are a couple of career and techs in there, right? So if you average those all, it's going to look slightly different. And then English language learners, and that stayed pretty consistent as well.
Cindy, why is, why are we only at 84% there?
There are, there are some other things, I picked out the major programs as a subset.
Okay, thank you.
So for instance...
So it shouldn't add up to 100?
It shouldn't.
All right, thank you.
No, there are small subsets that spread across programs.
Thank you.
And, let's see. Yes.
Yeah, on the special ed, does that include all IEPs, or do we now separate speech IEPs from the other?
It will include all spending, so if a student with speech, that receives only speech services...
It'll be included.
Is still put into the special education census.
Okay, it'll be in.
Right, then it would be included. If they're not part of the census count anymore, then they shouldn't be captured as special education cost anymore. I believe we went over that, about a year ago, that change with the folks out in the field, so just to try and reinforce it, because you should be getting that information from your special ed program people, right?
We don't have one.
Okay. Oh, Cyrus, can you just toggle back to that other one real quick? I think I have two more slides to show you, we're done. Just because I know you had some questions. And just go to the, yeah, perfect, thank you. Okay, so I just wanted to give you a quick revenue snapshot. So we've been talking about your expenses in all of these slides, and revenue, we can do quite a bit with that as well. What I've done here is just to give you a flavor of it, so I looked at your revenue by federal, state, and local sources, and we know what those are because that's how the coding is built for UCOA. So we can see both for you and the other districts, how your costs are split out. So in this illustration, you can see Newport has 60% of its revenue comes from the local sources, 12 from federal, and 28 from the state in fiscal 13. And at the top, they're rather small, but you'll be able to see them if I can show that handout with you. What you see are just the gross budget numbers, okay? So, let's see here, 39.0, is it 9, I think, on yours? 39.8 for gross budget, and that's how your revenue actually divides up, okay? And so I'm happy to share those with you as well. You'll see movement year to year on those, but not dramatic movement, because the federal dollars, people get about the same percentage in federal dollars every year, unless those are dramatic cut at the federal level. And the state formula will be interesting to watch very shortly, because the transition year, I believe it's two years left, and the transitioning is over, and so that's going to dramatically change some of these numbers. So something to watch. Grants are in there. So they're part of the local number, if it's a local grant, or federal or state, depending where it falls, they're classified in the bucket where they came from. Okay, and then just a quick look at property tax appropriation for those same communities?
Can you pause for a moment?
Of course.
Thank you. No, I was just, we were trying to figure that one out, that last one out a little bit, so, so in that 60% from Newport, right? You would include any local grants we got?
Yes, so that's going to include your...
So that's just not straight with the city? You don't have one that says with the city?
It is not, I, I do, that's my next one for you. This would include local grants, so Walmart, Rhode Island Foundation, because that's, that's considered a local, it's not a state funding source or a federal, so it's a local. So if you think about that whole range of monies you might get, everything, unless it's a state grant or it's a federal source, is a local. So it's your property tax, your local, and then miscellaneous receipts that would come in, like a jury duty reimbursement or something like that, if you have something like that.
All right.
Okay? Okay, and this is the property tax alone. So all this is, is a very quick snapshot, comparing 12 to 13 in those communities, and you can see that some communities stayed flat, others had increases over the prior year, and we have one with a decrease. Okay, and that decrease had, had a story behind it, of course, but not relevant for you, but there was a reason for that. And we do look at this over time as well, but we are tracking it year to year, obviously for maintenance of effort purposes, because there are some laws around this. And then the last one I wanted to show you, when we've talked about your leadership costs, this will just drill it one level deeper. You could go even deeper than this, but this will show you for your school, principals, assistant principals, then the office, as opposed to the last three, which are considered that central management level, with your legal in there as well. To just take a look at that and see if anything jumps at you. There was nothing particularly glaring, some variances certainly, but things that, you know, if you wanted to know why that differs from others, you'd want to go into each of these categories more deeply.
Yeah, we have to go into superintendent and board.
There you go.
Why is that one so high? That was before you.
Oh, that's before me. But we still should look at it.
No, we had, we had the most expensive superintendent, I think.
Well, we did.
I raised it because I thought it was about me, let me be clear.
Remember, not just the superintendent, but the cost of the superintendent's staff, office, etc.
Okay.
So all of that goes in the picture.
Partly it's classification, too, because there's nothing in the deputies and senior admin.
Yeah, it looks like that was put in place.
Right, so it got put all together.
Right, so something to look at, to make sure it's classified correctly, moving forward. Okay, so that's basically what we put together for you. I hope that was helpful, and certainly more than willing to provide any additional information that you think you might need.
Yes, okay, so just to, this has been incredibly helpful, and you answered all my questions that I posed earlier, and, but could you, maybe, when we do this one more time again, because I think the public, I mean, like after 2014, could you also compare us to an urban ring school with the same poverty rate? Just because poverty rates directly, directly relates to the per-pupil spending more closely than maybe anything else, and so I think it'd be really interesting if we could see that. And also, could we get one more thing? Could we get the NAC-TEC taken out, just so we can see how we compare at that high school level with that, with that taken out of the expenditures, that's it.
Sure. But we would have to look at all the comparative communities and make sure what they have, and do that as well, to take a look at that. But we certainly can do that. So we're working on 14 data now. I would say we're probably about six weeks away from publication, because we have a few districts that are, you know, finishing up, so, and then it takes us about a month. So about six weeks away, and we should have 14 data.
You know, 14 data will reflect the opening of the new school and the closing of the previous four.
Exactly.
So there should be some dramatic differences.
I can't wait to look at it.
That should be interesting.
Yes, absolutely.
So, thank you very much.
Very welcome.
We have a systems group that looks at finances out here. You often talk about drilling down, I would call it a detail thing, so can we get a detail report of every single one of these things?
Yes, you can actually pull it right off our website, it's all there, with the descriptions attached to it, and, and the statistical information that I'm showing you beside it, percentages, state averages, and all of that, those are on the tables we publish as well.
One last question. When you look at...
You did that, didn't you?
Luisa did.
You used to have career tech separated, and yours, it's all together now. Two years ago, 2011, you could get career tech.
It's still separate in the master database, it's just not separate on a segment report, because we don't do every school. But you can pull the category, the program category of career tech and just get that. Give me a call, I'm happy to walk you through it.
Okay, and Cindy, oh, I'm sorry.
One last question. So we look at UCOA items, we have about 100. I've seen other towns with 150, 175, why?
There are levels within UCOA where you can go deeper than you have to go, so there are mandatory levels within each segment of the code. Some districts choose to go deeper in some areas and not in others. People went into it gung-ho, and in some cases, they did that. And then what they realized years later was that every time you expand a particular area, if it has to do with, say, a wage, then it exponentially expands the benefits, because there are 10, 12 benefit lines with every wage line. So it gets out of control if you're not strategic about it. So there are districts that are very strategic, some have actually even fewer, because they collapse it down, because they say, my school committee doesn't want to see all this detail, they just want the high-level summary.
I think your superintendent doesn't want the school committee to see that.
It's always available to you.
So there's no state average on how many lineups they have for UCOA? Like, we have 100 and some...
No, there are some standard reports that every district has to produce, and they would be the same, identical from district to district, that were built when we built UCOA. So they could run those, and then you could go to your neighbor and district and ask them to run that report, and you should be looking at an identical report, except for the numbers themselves. So, but we haven't gotten to that yet. We, when we're talking about budgeting, we will be talking about defining that right level. That doesn't mean, that'll be the minimum. Districts will still choose whether or not to go deeper.
Found it right on the site. Everything here, all kinds of good.
Thank you. Cindy, thank you very much. I know you have very long days, and I greatly appreciate this. And maybe we can follow up and talk about if there's an opportunity to have some maybe training, or we could bring some people in, because we do have a community group that would really like to work with us, and, you know, it's always people power, and if we could get some training for people, I think that would be great, too. All right, thank you. Very accommodating, thank you. Now go home and rest.
Mr. Chairman, before we finish, I just, I want to thank you for coming down, but I also would like to point out that when I'm looking at these numbers, if you look at the tax rates in Middletown, Portsmouth, and Newport, Newport's got the lowest tax rate, and, and I'm looking at this saying, it's, and we're talking about what we spend per kid, but we also have to look at what is, what does it cost a city per kid? And our numbers are really pretty good, we're better than the other communities on this island on what we spend out of our money for kids. We get money from other places, and I think that gets lost in the conversation. So when we, it's like if you send your kid to a private school and it costs you $15,000, and they add another $5,000 into that child's education, and you get a $20,000 education, people are happy with that. So I think that people should be looking and say, we should be happy that people, that Newport spends some of the money we spend on kids, because we get money from other sources. So the per pupil of what we actually spend, as opposed to what does it cost the taxpayers of Newport? Taxpayers of Newport, their taxes are not the same as Middletown and Portsmouth, they're lower, yet they're getting more for their money in Newport. I thought that when I was sitting at the graduation, and I was looking at the amount of money that was coming for kids for scholarships, I'm saying, there's 100 kids graduating from Rogers High School, there's $100,000 worth of scholarships on the table. If my child is out in another district where there's 200 or 300 kids competing for that kind of money, I'm better sitting in Newport in the auditorium here where there's a smaller group of kids and a big pot of money.
Thank you.
Hi, thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to introduce you to Carrie Clark. Carrie Clark is our school-based coordinator. She's been very active, working with our students at Rogers High School in the NAC-TEC area. She's also starting to establish business partnerships, reaching out to others throughout the community, in an, in an effort to help further our goal, our strategic goal of improving and increasing NAC-TEC. So I'm going to hand it over to Carrie at this point in time.
Thank you, Superintendent Jermaine. I essentially wanted to come and introduce myself. As Colleen said, my name's Carrie Clark, and I'm the school-based coordinator here at Rogers and for NAC-TEC. I've been here about two, exactly two months, so I have really hit the ground running and have accomplished a lot, I think, so far, in partnership, you know, with teachers and administrators and community partners as well. So I've been developing a lot of relationships, external and internal relationships. I've been uncovering some opportunities that are out there for Newport Public Schools, for Rogers and NAC-TEC, and I'm, I'm trying to enhance and grow those opportunities, so. I have, I provided a report for you, I think you all have it on your, received it electronically. So I kind of, I gave an update of what I've done so far in the last two months, some current projects that are, are going on right now, and then what I'm planning for the coming school year. So, you know, I'm definitely open to feedback, I have an open door, I'm right down the hall, and I'd love to hear from any of you if you have any suggestions. You know, I'm here, I'm very excited to be here, and I think it's a really exciting time for Newport and for Rogers, and I think, you know, there's a lot of change and some exciting things going on, so I think we're really heading in a good direction. And other community partners that I've talked to and kind of filled them in on what we're doing, they're very excited, so, and they're happy, you know, that there's changes and there's growth going on, so.
Carrie, I applaud you, because I think this is the trend starting in the country, and I'm glad to see that we're out ahead of this one. And I, I see on this island, a lot of opportunities for people to go to work who don't necessarily have to go to college. I see the voting, voting industry, I see the renovations of homes, and I, I think this is a great first step, and I applaud you.
Thank you very much.
I'm sorry, Cindy.
The, going through this again here, you have, you know, alumni success stories, and you mentioned the weird careers and business, and this, this is something that I think was focusing on the success that our young people can have, and it could be youngsters who eventually will go to college, might not right, right away, and having the theme, the whole idea you have here about the monthly themes, and this is something that has to keep getting driven home to the kids, but I think of even having some of their almost peers, those who have just gotten out, and they can see that the, really some of the wonderful programs we have, and hopefully, we can expand.
Exactly, and there are a lot of successful, you know, alumni that have gone through... Exactly, and there are a lot of successful, you know, alumni that have gone through NACTEC especially, that I've been talking to. And, you know, there's a lot of great things going on already that we want to, you know, make the public aware of and then hopefully enhance it and even grow those things further, so.
One of our goals was to reestablish the Community Support Committee for Vocational and Technical Education. And, starting in January, we would like to meet with you and really sketch out a plan for getting that, getting that onboard. We want to be proactive in supporting NACTEC and to bring it back to its original glory. We have a lot of alumni on this island who have made lots of money with what they learned here at this center and they want to come back.
Absolutely.
And talk to the kids and let them know.
And the focus is really educating the public?
Yeah.
And the students, that it's college and career, right?
That's right.
It's not, it's, you know, it's not just if you're, you know, vocational or the trades or however you want to say it, the career and technical school. If you're going to a four-year, we have students at Harvard right now that went through NACTEC that are at Harvard, I mean, so you can be going to college or you can go right into a career, it's just another feather in your cap.
Mr. Chairman, I know this is probably not your thing, but we may have to go to the superintendent, it may be our thing as a committee, too. I see the med school as a charter school, and I know it's not, quote unquote, but we spend $8,600 per pupil there. And last year it was 42, now it is 38. And we used to have nine voc tech programs in this building, I think there's six now, I'm not sure of that number. But what has happened, we can't compete with good things. For example, we used to have a boat building one year. How can we compete with Iris? How do we compete with Iris? Probably one of the best ones in the nation. So my thing, maybe to you or to the committee, the board, whoever, is that, what are your thoughts on, and it's probably scheduling or whatever, because we have to get the scheduling, figure out these kids in high school, get them in there. What do you thought if we filed, there were six kids in grade 10 that want to be into boat building? Could we send them to that school without setting up a program in this building again?
Well, there's, there's a couple different, you know, directions that we could go in. One thing that we're looking at right now is having an apprentice, pre-apprenticeship program for the summer. And there's a couple of different options that we could do. It could be ninth to 11th grade students that would come for the summer and do a six-week program and they'd actually be going to Iris, be going to New England Boat Works and all these different site locations and learning and also in the classroom. So that's something we've talked about. And I don't see it as, you know, competing with the community partners or other places. We're collaborating and we've actually already met with some business partners and schools and, you know, we were really promoting a partnership and how we can help each other. Because, say, you know, if, some people might look at Iris as a competitor, but I don't, I look at it as a partner. And let's figure out how we can become maybe a feeder program to Iris or make the students more aware about different marine trade professions.
So how do you recommend we do that with the students? Presently, they cannot do that in our schedule. The way the high school schedule is presently set, that's not attainable.
To go to?
Correct.
Iris, is that what you're saying?
Correct. You couldn't, like, like the med school, they go to school for two days a week and about three days a week at Iris or at auto shop or automobile dealership or hairdresser place. Our present schedule does not allow the kids to do that.
Well, I think we're exploring those opportunities right now and it would, the schedule would have to change. It can't be the same as it is now and I know that's, you know, has been a big issue. And we have to make it compatible with other schedules and for sending them out into the field or sending them to another school, not another school, like high school, but to an Iris or something like that, where they could partake in their programming, so.
So just, Mr. Leary, just, we are having those discussions already and we just met with Iris last week and our other partners and we're talking about, to exactly your point, about changing the schedule and giving the opportunities. We're going through the credit attainment and how do we do that? So that the children will be ready in time to graduate on time. So we're trying to figure that out and Carrie's been very instrumental in that.
So if you have any, like, want further details about that, I'm happy to talk with you.
Talking about the schedule, we also need to really, really think seriously about like zero-period PE, because I know my son, he's, you know, he's a full-time NACTEC student in, in the carpentry program, but he can't get in the Spanish he needs to go to college, you know. So, and he's also plays sports after school. So, I mean, you kind of can do it all, but we just got to figure out a way so that these kids, you know, and maybe that even next semester we start offering zero-period PE. So we just, I, you know, I hate to see these kids miss out on something because they, you know, we just need to have, make sure all the opportunities are open.
And that has to be really important in planning for the future and next year, because we don't want them to lose the Spanish or the language or, you know, something else they want to do because of, you know, that.
Policy.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you very much. And, like I said, just, you know, I, I would love to hear from you and I would absolutely love to meet with you in January about that. I was, wanted to put together an advisory board, a community kind of partner board anyway, so I was going to reach out to you and see if you had recommendations for people.
I do.
All right, great, thank you very much.
Thank you, Carrie.
You'll join anything.
Sure.
Okay, the next item is 5.4, which is fire inspections.
5.3.
Ed, I guess you're on for this.
5.3.
5.3.
I'm sorry. What did I forget?
It's got to be finance. It's finance.
He's trying to get out of here.
Okay. Joan, I guess, I'm sorry. They didn't give me a copy in here, so that's why I'm...
So you want to give us the walkthrough of all these line items that we...
Not all of them.
Oh, not all, I thank you. The ones we added, deleted, too.
I believe it, I believe it was at the August school committee meeting, I'm not positive.
Right, it was.
That you requested a budget amendment.
Right.
And I finally got it in here and while I was doing that, the summer school program was also changed from, the summer school program at Rogers High School was actually run in-house instead of through the community school this year. So some of those lines, they had been budgeted as contracted summer school and they had to move back into the regular UCOA lines. So basically, we restored the regular salary steps and based on, remember, we passed the Priority One budget and we've hired a number of people under that Priority One budget. When we did the budget, because we don't know what we're going to actually hire or who we're going to hire, we budget all family plans for everything. And it turned out that a lot of people who were either single or took the buyback. So, like the health insurance cost, I'm projecting that it's going down based on the people that we actually have on staff at, as of October 31st. And you can see dental went down, the medical buyback, the projection went down slightly, workers' comp went down. In order to balance this, [inaudible] 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 basically cut technology hardware and to balance the budget.
So just a couple, I don't have time of, the substitute, seems like we're running...
What line?
51115. We had cut that by 100,000. And it doesn't seem to be running fine or it looks, it looks like 70, 66% has been used already, or available, I'm sorry.
Okay, well, what you got to remember is some of our administrators are interim and they actually have to be charged to the substitute line because of UCOA. So I will have to do a budget adjustment to move regular salary to the substitute line once the interims all clear out.
And we like our interims.
Yes, we love our interims, but they cause more accounting work for me.
So that line could be overdrawn?
No, I could be doing a budget amendment to move money out of the regular salary budget into the sub-budget to cover all the interim costs.
Cover, okay.
At the beginning of the year, we also had a number of paras that were substitutes and now we have hired people. So part of their beginning-of-the-year salary should really be moved, the budget for it should be moved to the sub-line.
Okay, so 52201, retiree benefits, we cut that by roughly $490,000. Where are we with that?
We're in negotiations.
That could be a problem.
We're in negotiations.
One last line, 55600 tuition.
The special ed office provided me some data yesterday at five, 4 o'clock, 5 o'clock. Kathy happens to be here and I have to go over that with our interim special ed director, which will be sometime next week, uh, the week after, she's away next week.
We cut that one by 410,000.
And we will realize about an 87,000 to 90,000 from the med school. And I can't project where...
Well, we have less kids in med school. Last year we had 42 kids in med school and this year I believe it's like 32, am I correct? Am I off?
Correct. I just said, we'll cut the budget by 87,000 to 90,000.
That's goodness.
But I don't know where the special ed tuitions are going to end up.
Right. We're on target for a number of kids. I looked from last year, the amount of kids we had outside placement and then we have Fresno outside placement, it's right to the same number, like 42, something like that, I forgot that number, I don't have it with me, but it's right on. The costs could be different for the programs. I said three, that's all.
Okay, anybody else?
Joan, I didn't mean to slight you, but thank you.
Oh, that's okay.
Thank you, Joan.
Now we're going to 5.4, 5.4 is fire. It was...
So the fire department recently went through and did a fire inspection on all the buildings. For the most part, Pell and Thompson, we have some housekeeping issues and some minor things that we'll address internally with the ongoing theme throughout the district of chucking doors. They're not going to allow that anymore. If they continually walk in the school and they see the doors chucked, they're going to require us to hook all the doors up to magnets and tie them into the fire alarm system, which is going to be very expensive. I really don't recommend that. So the reports went out to the principals and I would hope we'd have their assistance in addressing the staff not to do that. The real issue comes at Rogers. I would, I guess, or from what I'm understanding, back in June, we went to the fire board, we got some type of waiver that we had to do full coverage of the areas of Rogers that weren't sprinkled. We hired a contractor at that time, he came in, did the work, the fire department went through and inspected what he installed and signed off on it. The problem was he didn't complete the job. And now when the fire department went back through, they're finding out that we're probably missing 29 devices that should have been installed. So, long and short of it, I've asked the contractor to meet with the fire marshal to get specifically down what needs to be done. At some point, we're probably going to have to go back to the state board and get another time waiver, because this was supposed to be done in June and then finish the work.
Mrs. Gaines?
Did we pay him to do that job thoroughly?
We paid him for what he did.
Okay.
Part of, let me, let me go back to that. So part of the thing was when I first got here, a bill came across for, for this work and I'm like, I don't, I don't even know what this was about. So I couldn't approve it until I knew that the fire department had signed off on the work and they did. Now, the fire department has been honest enough to sit there and say they, they kind of slipped up too, because they didn't really inspect everything that should have been inspected. They inspected what should have, what was installed. And now the next time they went through, they're finding stuff that's missing.
Do you have even a roundabout estimate for how much that may cost, based on, based on what you paid before?
Off, off the top of my head, I could shoot you something, but it's like 29 devices. I'm not sure, because I'm not sure where they actually all are. And if they're in closets, that's a little bit more difficult than hallways in classrooms.
Okay, and could you, when you said chuck the doors, do you mean that like a wedge?
Yep.
And that, and so...
Propping them open.
They cannot prop the doors open.
You can't prop doors open. Can you leave a door open in a classroom? Is there's no...
No, no, not unless the door is tied to some type of magnet that's going to release when the fire, when the fire alarm goes off. And, you know, look, this isn't the only district that struggles with that, all of them do.
You know, when, when we were looking at the building before, I, I didn't understand why there were no, no device on the door to allow it to be open, to stay open. You know those little things that they flip over on the floor?
Yep.
And I, I complained to the builder about it and I was told it was built according to codes. And I never understood until...
It was. The other thing that the building, speaking of Pell, Pell was designed to maintain, maintain the temperatures in the classroom with those doors closed. So the whole HVAC system was designed with those doors closed. And I, believe me, I understand that. I've been doing this a while. Teachers, some teachers like their doors open, some teachers like to use the hallway as teaching spaces, you know, so it's, it's a difficult thing, but the reality is, if, you know, if we can't get there, then the district's going to have to spend a lot of money to make that correction.
And I think you'll be back later, so thank you for this report.
Okay, I think I'm on the next two. Do you want me to sit down and keep walking back up?
So...
5.6, which is facility subcommittee update.
5.4, I'm sorry, 5.5.
So that's, you have, you have the school dude report, the one thing I'm going to tell you that is if you start looking at that and you start going back much, you're going to start to see they're piling up. And they're not, they're not getting completed as quick as they should have. And that's one of the things when I first came here and I spoke to you, that, you know, you need data like that in front of you to see what's going on in the building. As opposed to me telling you and standing here, "We need more staff." That's something that I'm going to use in front of you to show you that, look, we're not, we, we're not staffed to get these things done. So at the end of the day, it's, we need, we need to either staff correctly or we need to go back and tell teachers, "These things just are not getting done."
Could you be more specific of what's not being done?
The work orders on there. So I could print out every one of those work orders and I will tell you, they're probably everything from a pencil sharpener fell off to the toilets clogged, to the doors broken, I have a broken window, I have tiles popping up, they range from A to Z.
Any questions about that report? I guess I've got 5.6.
That's the building committee for Rogers.
Yes.
Right now, the staff at Rogers is still compiling a list of people that they feel would be best suited to serve on that. Obviously, I'm not going to be here, I know you asked to sit on there, but that's going to need to be put together and, and started and I just, you know, I just, and I've had the su, the talk with the superintendent, I just feel the people that, the administrators in Rogers would know who's better suited to sit on that committee than I would at this point.
You're still up, Mrs....
Okay.
5.7.
Yeah, go ahead.
Can I make a comment on that, too?
Yes.
Just, just to remind everybody, there's a policy we have about, which I just reminded myself of, putting together a new wellness committee, that we have to follow in terms of inviting public to be on committee, so just, we have to post it.
I guess the next one is facilities transition.
So what I did was, I went through every building and I bulleted what I felt should be done or, or should be looked at. So if you have any questions about anything on there, I've also told the superintendent that by all means, she needs to call me and ask me, "What was I thinking when I was doing these things?" Or where, or where actually was I going with all that? I'm, you know, I'm available to do all that, so.
Thank you.
All right.
You know, we, I mean, I didn't want to call today, because I know that we're short of some help, but ours did not have it attached.
No, it didn't attach.
It didn't attach?
Didn't attach?
No.
No.
I just knew you guys...
Can, can you send it to us tomorrow?
Wow, it's huge.
5.8, enrollment and demographic reports.
You have the reports in front of you. I did give you a brief memo on this. You'll notice the enrollment has decreased and most of that is due to, we've been doing some scrubbing of the high school data. And what I mean by scrubbing of the high school data is we've noticed, and we noticed over the first three to four weeks of school, we were carrying students at the high school level that had not been attending school for, in some cases, over a year. And in some cases, some of the students were already 18 years old and we hadn't seen them in a very long time. And in some cases, some of the students were already eighteen years old and we hadn't seen them in a very long time. So with the help of the high school staff, the high school guidance, and just looking at the data and asking questions, we've spent about three to five weeks looking at the data, looking at the names on these enrollments. And literally a couple of these students, more than a couple, had not been on our campus in about two years. So we have taken the next steps that are necessary. We have reached some of them. And some of them have been exited to the adult learning program over at JFK with Tracy Shea and the community group and Stan Brown. We do have a larger number than usual of students that are enrolled in that now in lieu of getting their high school diploma, they're getting their GED. I will share with you that it's been brought to my attention a while ago, just for Rogers, that the enrollment had increased for the GEDs. But island-wide, Tracy Shea has contacted me and we've had conversation that some school districts on the island that normally maybe had one or two students enrolled in this program have several, have many. And I think it's something statewide, I will be bringing this up with Rissa, that we have students now, when the law changed to eighteen, we have some students that no matter what we tried to do to keep them in school till they're eighteen. We're, I'll just speak for Newport. But we're trying to seek alternative programming for these students so they can get some kind of formal education. We're required by law, but just, they should have it anyways. And it's becoming very challenging to find those programs. It also costs money to send them out to the programs in the future. It doesn't cost now. But we've been alerted that the adult ed program will be charging a different kind of fee going forward. So budgeting purposes, we are going to have to pay attention to that.
Charlie?
Yes.
Okay, so I know I'm preaching to the choir here, sitting up around me, but, you know, we have to be really careful because every one of those kids counts against us in our graduation rate. And, and I'm just, you know, like, like we can't scrub them away. We got to make sure we catch them like right when it's happening. To say that we, we, you know, I know you're probably horrified that we would wait a year or two to catch a child. That, that just can't happen anymore, you know. And I know that you just got a, recently got a grant to maybe get some help at the high school. But, you know, if we caught them the first week that they weren't attending school, maybe we'd have a chance to catch them. This is just, I mean, it just makes me sick to think of this. And also, maybe, you know, as, go, go, keep going here. We realize that that GED program's going to cost us money. We've just invested a lot of money in our own ALP. Let's not call it ALP. Let's, why can't it be a GED ALP program?
Oh, we've already talked about renaming it, actually accelerated learning program, I think.
Right, and so that's maybe where our kids, keep our kids here and keep them invested. Keep them, you know, a lot of them are starting to play sports that are in the ALP. They're starting to get into our NAC tech programs. And, you know, if you want to keep a kid interested in school, you got to connect them to an adult, a program, a passion. And that's where we're losing them. We just, I, that just makes, I can't even talk.
Well, I, I want to just agree. We got to keep them, but we got to give them something to keep them here.
Exactly.
And we have failed miserably at doing that. That's why it's important to get NAC tech back, to get ALP, well, we're calling it something else.
Accelerated.
Accelerated learning program back. And really make it an accelerated learning program, not just a name only. But allow those kids to move at their own pace. If they can do two years' work in one year, good for them. And let them move on.
Mr. Chairman? So follow-up on Mrs. Bowlen and Mrs. Gaines' point here. We had a hundred and two graduating class last year. We started with a hundred and sixty, and dropped on seventy. Our dropout rate was the lowest in the west, in second western state. I'm looking at grade ten right now, it says a hundred and twenty-four. Last year it was a hundred and sixty-four. Do we know, in that area, I'm sorry, I don't have the exact number with me. Do we know where those forty kids have went already?
We do know where most of them are. And actually, just because, I, I will share with you, I know everything, everybody wants everything right away. The team right now, especially the data team, she's trying to get state reports in and everything else. I'm actually trying to look at, to your point, because Mr. Leary, you have raised that before. And people want to see where, and Ms. Bowlen, you've asked the question as well. We have to track them. We do have codes on them. So we're trying to get all those numbers. And I'm hoping for December I'll have a report for you that will show them. And we can go back to, we're going to try to get, capture last year's graduating class and then all the children going up. So our sophomores, our juniors, et cetera. And try to create a report so you can see the mobility going in and out and where the children are going. So we are trying to create that type of report because we should be watching that on a monthly basis. Like, we're looking at attendance every day on a daily basis, all of us, the administrative team, myself, counting how many kids are out every day. Thompson still does great on it. It's amazing how well Thompson does. But we, we have to start looking at that on a more regular basis as well.
Mrs. Gaines?
Why do we not do follow-up studies?
Can you clarify follow-up studies?
Follow-up studies through the guidance department, either one year or four-year. Send out letters to the graduates to find out where they are, what they are doing.
Okay, so I will look into that a little bit more. I do have, and I did ask a couple of weeks ago, some high school information, what happens after high school. Linda Matoza did forward me some information. I've just not compiled it into a story. But to your point, I do not think we send out surveys to our graduates. And that is, I agree with you on that. We should try to do that.
We should.
So people in the audience, I hope you're listening.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
We used to do that. I don't know what, where it stopped, but that.
Haven't done it since I've been on the committee.
But that used to happen because I know we used to look at that information and know where they were and whether they were staying in or what was going on. I, I know that that was going on. You know, the thing I'd say is I, one of the most important things we can do for those kids is to hook them up with somebody as a mentor, you know. And if, if I'm sitting there looking, we've got twenty-five kids that are at risk, then we should be taking and saying, can we find twenty-five people in the community that are willing to come into the school and mentor some of these kids? I personally have taken on a kid this year because I know a kid who was in the senior class who I know, and I know he was starting to struggle, and so I jumped in on that. But there's other people in the community, I'm sure, that would be willing to come into the community, into the high school and hook them up with some of these kids that have good rapport with the kids of this age. I mean, you got to get the right personalities. But, you know, those are the kinds of things that will make a difference. And it's not saying to the teachers, here's one more thing you have to do. Let's look at some of the resources we have in the community, some of the people we have, you know, the Mr. Learys of the world that have rapport with people. You know, he does, he has a good rapport with kids, you know. But those are the kind of people that are out in the community that could come in and, and help in, in the school. And that would make a difference.
Mr. Chairman? The Aquinic Island mentoring program is still going on. I know the young lady I see, she's in the eighth grade now and I've been meeting with her since she was in second grade. And she will be heading down here next year. And the youngsters that, you know, that we work with sometimes have various issues. But you can really see the growth, not just the fact that she's that tall, but the, the growth in, in attitude, commitment to her work and so forth. And I think the, if people, because obviously in the high school, we're talking about that particular population. But if we could get more folks in the community, in the, on the island, who would be willing to spend, it's like half an hour a week for the school year with the youngsters and you, you, you set, you know, you set up the time. And this, perhaps people who will be watching this might say, hey, this is not a bad idea, that if we can keep these youngsters in. Obviously, some of the loss of people who have moved elsewhere. But for the youngsters who are dropping out because we are not getting that hook out to them, that that one-on-one relationship or connection is something that really has to be established in all three schools.
I just want to give you two numbers that'll make you support what you're saying. We have over two-hundred kids in kindergarten and first grade, I guess. We graduate a hundred kids at twelfth grade. Where did those hundred kids go? I don't know, but it's something we, it's not just the high school. I think it's the whole spectrum from.
We have a mobile population.
Kindergarten on up. Enough of the homeless, five-point-wide, five-point-nine. I guess that's.
Yes, um, yes. You'll notice, and as promised, you'll receive the homeless report each month. And you'll also see the previous years as shown, or the previous month, I should say, and where we are. And at, let's see, as of this report, two families found housing in the district. One with one student, the other with two. One family with one student moved out of the district. One Rogers student no longer is enrolled in the district. And new families this month, two with one student, two non-school age, and the other with two students and two non-school age. Sharon Carter and our schools put this together as part of McVinnie Vento.
Kenny.
Kenny, thank you, it's getting late. McKenny Vento. And if you have any questions, but I do think it's important we stay on top of this.
I have a question, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Every time I try and blow a blow by, there's a woman, they're panhandling, saying that she's homeless and has three kids. Is that one of ours or no? Or is that just a story and she's headed to the cemetery laying around for a bottle?
I do not know the woman.
Oh, you haven't seen her? Go ahead.
Later.
All right, afterwards, yeah.
And I just want to point out, I noticed that you've got one student here that's an unaccompanied youth, no longer enrolled in the district. It's important that we try to track him because we own him. And so he, he too will end up on our statistics. And so, and I also just think about using non-conventional methods such as, sometimes the kids know how to find them. You know, like on Twitter or Facebook or whatever they're using these days. But it just, you know, I, I was able to find five students last year that disappeared and using those methods.
Social media.
Social media.
All right, so for the public, I'll just report out, we have seventeen families that are homeless, thirty-three students, twenty-four are at Pell, three at Thompson, four at RHS, and two is out of school district and ten of our non-school age.
This might be a crazy question, but I have to ask it. Do they still have the choice where the kid goes to school if they're homeless?
Yes, if they, once, when, Mr., just for the TV, for the public. Mr. Leary's asking the question, if a child, for instance, lives in Newport and their family becomes homeless and they perhaps find shelter, let's say, in Bristol Warren, the Newport School District is responsible to make sure that those children are able to still attend the Newport schools. What we do is we try to work with the community in which they live. And because all districts usually go through something like this and we try to coordinate, so we try to keep costs down in that way. But we do, we are responsible to make sure they do get to our schools. And vice versa, they're responsible to get the kids to our schools.
I think in a pay, in the past, we had paid for, person that was bused to Providence.
Family.
Family. So I guess my point here is that I don't get, these people having social and other distress problems and it feels sympathetic for the whole thing, but they're making decisions that they probably shouldn't be making. I don't know how they say it.
Bobby, it's federal law.
They do that for the welfare of the child. It's very traumatic to be homeless. So you're adding trauma when you have to go into a brand-new school every time you find shelter in a different place. So it's, it's, it's trying, trying to ease the, the stress that a child might be under who is homeless. Taking them out of a familiar environment and putting them in another one. It, it's, it just compounds the problem.
And I, and I hear that loud and clear, Ms. Gaines, but my concern was that, I know we paid for a cab before for the kid to go to Providence, back and forth, homeless kid.
Right, and I said it backwards. It's the, my witching hour is coming, it's nine o'clock. But it's the other, it's the other way around. It's if they lived in Newport and they moved to Providence, Providence would have to get them here.
And Bobby, just one thing, we receive extra funds to do that.
We do, every year. Federal funds.
Federal funds.
I'm going to move on to item six-point-two, which is appointments and transfers and recalls.
There was a five-ten Newport School Department update. I just want to share, the committee can look at that, we're in good shape. You'll notice it's yellow and green and everything's going fine there. And also, as part of my update, I just wanted to mention the White House on Broadway. We do have another partner that's interested in moving in. And the person we have the lease with, Aquinic Island.
Planning committee.
Planning committee has agreed to allow, I believe it's the substance abuse prevention group.
Keyword prevention.
Prevention, prevention. And Ben Elcom, but I just wanted to keep you informed on that. Thank you.
Okay, press is over, so we're over to six-point-two, which is the appointment, transfers, recalls. Make that a consent count. Does anybody want to extract any item out of that?
Yeah, could we extract the principal for a separate vote and the support staff for a separate vote? And I think that'll be it. Listen, Bill, something?
So I would move, I move we accept the consent agenda minus the items that were previously mentioned.
Second discussion. All in favor of supporting the calendar with those exceptions? Please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So now let's take up the principal first. Do you want to start it off with a discussion?
What, what me? Okay.
No, I don't have a question. I think it's very important that we just not roll over that.
Oh, okay. Thank you. All right, so before you this evening, we have the principal and the position and the person I am fully supporting and recommending is Jeffrey Goss. Jeffrey Goss comes from us, from Providence School District.
Comes to us.
Oh, I'm sorry, comes to us. Okay.
It's getting late.
It is, sorry. Jeffrey Goss comes to us from Providence. He is assistant principal at Classical High School. He is also the former principal at Gilbert Stewart and at middle school. And I will say, I've had the privilege to work with Mr. Goss in Providence and in Portsmouth. In Providence, I will just share with you that the short time he has been there in Providence, he's done amazing work and he's done things that others have never dared to do. He has done home visits in some of the toughest neighborhoods in South Providence and went places that no other principal has ever gone. He increased the student attendance in one year at Gilbert Middle School and brought it to the number-one attendance level in just the short time he was there. He reinstituted a PTO that had not been there for ages. I don't want to even tell you how many years they hadn't had a PTO. And he embraced the students and the community there to one of the highest levels I've ever seen. As assistant principal at Classical High School, so he's gone from being a principal of a middle school with some of the most challenging situations for families. He's brought children and families into it, the environment. And then he goes to Classical High School, which is the number-one high school in New England as far as student achievement, and he's assistant principal there. He evaluates, he supports the teachers and he helps them in their curriculum there. That is just a little snippet of what I personally know about Jeffrey Goss. But I also know Jeffrey Goss is a twenty-four-seven and puts students first at all times. He is a person that lives it and does it. And as far as Rogers High School is concerned, I think he's the perfect match where he will be able to take our high school to the next level. He'll be there for all our students and he'll be there for all our teachers. Now, I will share with you that he is a former Portsmouth Patriot. I did share with Mr. Goss, I do not want to see any Patriots clothing. I don't want to see any red, white, and blue. From this night forward, hopefully, he'll be breathing, living red and black Vikings. And I just want to say, I present Jeffrey Goss to you.
Is he here?
He's here.
Oh, man, come sit, where's your light?
Well, don't you want to do something first?
Good point, Charlie.
I need to, I have a motion please to...
I move to Superintendent's recommendation.
Second.
Okay, now it's up for discussion?
Ms. Chairman, the only thing I would say, as I worked at Gilbert Stewart Middle School for six months as a vice principal, I, I know what he went, what he lived. And they're great kids, but the families have so many needs up there.
And he turned that around very shortly.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Now you can take.
All right. I hope the wait was worth it, it's been a long night.
Well, thank you, School Committee and Superintendent Jermaine. It's going to be a great honor to take over as principal of Rogers High School and shift from one shade of red to a different shade of red and become a Viking. Very excited about that. Very excited about taking some of the things I learned in Providence, both the middle school level, dealing with an urban setting with some strong attendance issues, and then also what I've learned at Classical High School, which gives the most AP exams on the East Coast, for any high school on the East Coast. Take the two mixes of those, bring those to Rogers, and also get the Career Technical Center back up to where it was, and also, I'm very familiar with working with an ALP program, and part of my interview was talking about, my interview, with the interview committee, was talking about getting some sort of GED program involved, especially when you have CCRI right here and you lose too many students. But I'm just excited and look forward to get going as soon as possible. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
When do you, when do you take office, or when do you take?
When do you start?
When do I start? I have to talk to the Superintendent Lucy at Providence and give her probably two weeks' notice and then be down here hopefully the middle, middle of the week on December third or fourth.
She's going to hate us.
No, I've already talked to her.
She's already been warned.
That's the second steal in one, less than a year.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And who do you have here with you tonight, supporting you, sitting next to you?
I want to thank my wonderful wife Kelly as well.
Yes, all right, Kelly.
Coming here and supporting me.
Now, Mr. Leary, you want to take, tell me who the other ones you want to...
Yeah, well, I missed one, I'm sorry, Dr. Schumacher, I didn't want to slate the other people, but all the other positions were either coaching or staffing positions, so it didn't, essence of time, I want a separate vote on that. The other thing I want, one I missed, I'd like to do is a resignation. If Ortiz, Mr. Gonzalez, I'm sorry, wrote a letter, he's resigned, I think maybe the public should know that, and he could go to the microphone and do that too.
We hardly knew he.
For the TV audience, this is Osiris Gonzalez, our IT Director, who has submitted a letter of resignation, all for good reasons, the best reasons, family.
Yes, good evenings, School Committee and Superintendent Jermaine, I want to thank you for the last two-plus years of allowing me to be your Director of Technology, it's been a wonderful experience. Fortunately, there's an opportunity for me to be closer to my two loves of my lives, and those are the two boys, I have two children, I live in the Boston area, and I'll be much closer to be there as a supporting parent. And so that's why when the opportunity came up, it was just an opportunity that I couldn't allow to see go by. They're getting older, they're getting bigger, and I want to take the opportunity to be there now while they're still moldable and mindable, mendable minds.
Good.
As opposed to when they're adults, like Dad, I don't want to hear it.
Thank you, Osiris.
Bobby, what did you want to put up for vote?
The last one just...
I just like to comment. I'm glad that Osiris was available and with us, getting the Pell School up and running, he did a tremendous job with technology in that building.
He also wired...
Plus all the other little jobs he's had around in, in the other buildings, but I, I'm not sure we would be where we are with technology and Pell had Osiris not been here.
I agree, and we're wireless now, thanks to you.
Ms. Chairman, if I could second echo Mrs. Gaines' comments, when Pell first opened, a week before it opened, I went out there for the first three days unpacking boxes, and he was out there every day, day in and day out doing everything.
Making badges.
And I get kicked out by the union, but that's another story. You know, but I was there working, helping us for, for three days, and I couldn't believe how much work he was doing out there setting everything up in that week before the school opened, so thank you.
Made us look good.
Bobby, who, which ones do I want to approve?
The other one was the support staff, the support staff, if we can make, someone make a motion on that, Dr. Flowers have a motion or something?
Where, where do you have the support?
Appointments on the support staff.
So move.
Make a motion.
Well, there's a motion to be made for us.
Make the motion.
Chairman?
Which support staff?
I'll make a motion, I'd like to make a motion that you have a number of appointments tonight for staff and custodial, and I'd make a motion to support the custodial position at the Pell Annex.
Only?
Only.
Right, I second that motion.
It's been made and seconded, now it's open to discussion.
Mr. Chairman, the reason I'm, I'm bringing that up is because I, the other positions are going to be additions to the budget, I'm not going to be here on the committee, and I don't want to tie the hands of the people that are coming in here next month, so I don't feel it's appropriate for me to do that. I certainly have been here long enough to understand that the Pell Annex, we've got somebody out there, we have to do that anyways, and I'm certainly willing to support that.
Okay, all in favor of a motion?
No, wait, we got some discussion, I'm trying to find it on here, I got to separate it out.
I can't find it either.
Just give me a second to separate it.
Can I go while you're looking?
Yeah, go ahead.
I'm going to support this motion, but I have a real concern about Pell School proper. Going through that building after breakfast and seeing what I saw as far as the floors being swept and having to wait until after lunch to clean them is a health problem. And I think we need, we need somebody there, I'm willing to wait till the next council comes along, but I, we've got, we've got to hire people to keep the buildings clean.
So I have a question on one, there's another one that's a custodian, that's a budgeted item, so do we, do we do him tonight too? The one that's a budgeted for Pell?
If it's budgeted, I think we should.
I guess we could wait, that could be the next motion.
Because it needs, it needs it.
So now we're just talking about...
Just the one, we're bringing the next one motion up, yeah.
Maybe, maybe we should hold off on all these to see what's coming on then, yeah, still confused now, because you got one, you got one down the bottom through, it's also not budgeted, that's the support staff, so maybe we can modify the motion to hold off?
No.
You made the motion. I don't think it's appropriate for you to make a motion and try to...
All right, well, you guys may have a motion seconded on the floor, you're right.
Mrs., Dr. Flowers, you have your hand up or is it...
You want to hear from Ed and then you comment?
Are you looking to vote on the motion?
No, you had your hand up, I thought you had your...
No, no, I'm, no.
It was on the computer, okay.
All right, so this is something that I kind of brought out the second meeting I was here. Presently, we're just not properly staffed at any of the buildings to maintain them properly. Now, I understand the budget issues and everything, but the fallback of that is not maintaining the buildings. There are twenty-three, twenty-four hundred children that walk through every day. Now, as, as a school committee, I think you're going to be left with the task of making the decision. We're either going to maintain the buildings properly or, you know, we're going to have a bigger problem. I don't care if it's your lawn, your car, whatever, if you don't maintain something properly, you either abandon it, replace it, or it goes to waste. I, I wouldn't be up here pitching this on the ninth hour if I didn't totally believe in that, because honestly, it does, you know, I'm not trying to be arrogant, I'm not even here, but when, when I was tasked to come here, I was tasked to come here to put us in a better situation, and that's why I'm up here pitching for that. We're trying to open the schools, we're trying to open Pell, we're trying to get organizations in there, you can't do it without staff in there. Think Pell alone, you want to run events in there after school, there's only two people in the building at night. How do you clean that entire building and support an event that's going on there? It's, it can't be done. And this is the same thing with Thompson and Rogers. So while it is difficult, and I understand that, while you're concerned about taxpayers' dollars, and I do understand that too, I pay taxes on the island but not in this town, as a taxpayer, I'd be concerned about us having buildings and not properly maintaining them, because the downfall of that is going to cost you, cost you much more. We just went through a situation at Pell where we probably weren't properly staffed to get the building going, it cost us $30,000 in the blink of an eye. So how long do we keep going and proceeding with that type of setup before the reality comes in and says, look, we need to start doing what's correct for the buildings?
What's this $30,000 in the blink of an eye, hold off, there's a... Go ahead, Tom, you got them.
The fan problem, the fan problem.
Yeah, that was a mistake by a staff member, that's not a problem.
No, 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 we weren't, hold on a minute, hold on a minute. We didn't have anybody properly on that was in a position to maintain that system, that's the bottom line, I've already explained that to you, I know I have, I know I have.
I know you have, and I disagree with your explanation, totally.
You can, at the, at the end of the day, at the end of the day, look, you can look at me and say, I have no idea what I'm talking about, and we're going to proceed, but when things start going wrong, you might have to answer them, you know what?
I know, I know, it's a mistake cost, you're double the cost of everybody else, every single district is studied.
You're pulling up a number you don't understand in middle town.
We've got one motion on the floor, which is to approve the custodian at, Bobby, Bobby...
All right, all right, get the police in, I'll throw them out in a minute.
Okay. I really appreciate your time, but that's uncalled for and it's not professional.
It's not unprofessional, I follow the state's head.
Bobby, you're out of order. Dr. Flowers?
Maybe you're leaving, maybe you're leaving.
Ed, Ed, please, please don't respond. Ms., Dr. Flowers?
You know, I think when you were saying the, that if we don't have the sufficient number of personnel, and what Mrs. Gaines mentioned about seeing the situation with the floor, just getting the place clean and being sanitary, we don't want to go back to those old days of letting the schools fall apart. And we have to show pride in the schools. Pell is essentially two, two separate schools, we know that. And you would not have a custodian at one school and then go down to another one when, when they had the neighborhood schools. You know, we welcomed Ed Collins with open arms because of his expertise, and I've listened to everything that he has said. I feel at this point we should accept this and, and move along because we had even, he had even said, one of the other meetings we were at, there could be a shift of schedules, a shift of people's routines, he just didn't want to jump into it right away. Well, maybe now is the time to jump into it.
Right, let me just clarify my own line. The motion is to support the custodian at JFK, right?
Correct.
That's the only, so let's keep our comments limited to that.
Yeah, but that's, but that is what we're talking about, yeah.
We can make another motion on, so is there any motion, more discussion about the custodian at the JFK school?
Well, I mean, if we're going to do these piecemeal, I, you know, I wonder if they...
Well, that was the motion.
No, no, so I'm just saying, no, I'm just going to make a point, Charlie, that we might want to consider, like, that he may, may need to shift names then to do it too, I don't know if that's the person, you know, like, the whole thing becomes convoluted when you only do one and there's all these transfers involved, so is that going to be a problem, Colleen, like, if we do just the one tonight?
I'm, I'm going to move after this motion is disposed of, that we also hire the custodian for the Pell School.
Okay, I just meant like in terms of, you know...
It might pass, it might not.
Right, but it would make a difference, Charlie, that's what I'm trying to say.
So the transfer is someone that's already employed by us, okay?
Yeah, right.
All right, so it will leave an opening, if you'll notice, it'll leave the opening, and that's up above of the first candidate, if I read that correctly, let me get it right. Yep, so if you look at the suggestion that's been put on the table, under the transfers, that person would be transferred, and then the top person under support staff, that position, if I'm listening correctly, it sounds like you're saying, hold on that one. Then I hear Mrs. Gaines stating, for the Pell School, that position right there would be filled, if, if that motion goes to the table, as I'm hearing it, may go to the table. So that person would come on board. The positions that would not be filled are, if you look carefully, are the first, second, and third position noted under support staff. And it impacts all schools holding those positions.
Are we going to, are we going to tie it up if we hire this guy?
The recommendation is on the table, and I supported the recommendation of the, of the facilities director, so...
Mr. Chairman, we have a motion seconded for the, for the Pell School Annex.
Okay, for the Pell School, all in favor of that custodian, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, now, floor is open for further, Mrs. Gaines, do you have a...
Ms. Chairman, I move that we fill the position for custodian at the Pell School.
No, that was the Annex.
That was the Annex.
Annex.
Need a second.
Second?
Okay, it's open for discussion.
So how many, so $191,000 for three new positions, what's it going to cost?
Now, wait, we have, for one, one, she's talking about one.
So how many new positions is this, that's what I'm trying to get to?
One.
One new and altogether, total, total. Okay, so it's going to be a third of that cost, yep, okay.
May I ask for a...
Mr. Phelan?
We're hiring this person because we have lacked maintenance at the Pell School. The only reason I'm bringing it, the $30,000 wasn't done by during Mr. Collins' time, but the point was, when the school was opened, there wasn't proper training to the people that worked in the school. It wasn't that we didn't have the amount of people, the training wasn't proper. What they did, from what I understand, was a stupid mistake, they didn't have the backup material, that should have been done all along. I mean, we don't, we haven't got the whole story to the point of really how it happened, so I'm going by from what little I've been told. So it just, to me, it's just, you know, the $30,000 is a separate category.
You're right.
Okay, so the motion is, the motion is to hire one custodian for Pell.
I don't agree, I will say I don't agree with that, the full, the full, I hear what you're saying, and I'm hearing Mr. Phelan what you said about the mistake, and the mistake was due to not enough track, training for our staff, I do believe that's part of it, but I think also another part of it is, and I'm just sharing from what I've read, the recommendations, the reports that have been given, we also, because we didn't have enough staffing, people have been pulled in several directions there at that building. And it's like anything else, you know, when you don't have the full capacity and you don't have the training, it does have an impact like that, and I think that's the point that was trying to be made.
Ms. Chairman, if I can respond to that, we have on agenda tonight HVAC system person to be, a company to be hired to do what, and it tells you right in here, filters, maintenance also be fired with this contract, so we're going to...
Bobby, that's another, that's another issue, we're talking just about hiring this...
That's what she was commenting, Mr. Phelan's point.
We'll get to that, we'll get to that point, get there. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Now, does anybody else wish to make any other comments about six point two?
I think I would support.
All right, yes, I do, I do want to make a comment. As Superintendent, you have charged me to make recommendations to this committee, that is what is in the best interest for the district and for its students, for our facilities, for our teachers, for our community. Tonight's recommendation came to you with that intent and with follow-up after Mr. Collins has reported out to this committee several times about the needs for our schools and for our... for our district. I hear and I understand you want to hold because of the concern for a future committee and making them aware of the challenges we have in front of us and because there are unbudgeted items there. I put these recommendations on tonight because you are the committee that have lived this more than the new committee coming on board, and you are the committee that has been the most informed on this and why these recommendations are in front of you tonight. I'm not clear why tonight, except for the concern for the future committee and having unbudgeted items. But again, this committee was aware of that when this was put together and when Mr. Collins did what he was asked to do. And I would like to, at this time, thank Mr. Collins for all his work and what he's done for our district and what he's brought forward to our district. He will be missed, and I said in the paper, I'd take him back in a heartbeat. He has brought to light a lot of future planning for us, and he has helped in the short time he's been here. He's changed around the appearance of most of our buildings, so I want to thank him for that.
Mr. Chairman.
We're going to take up another issue, another custodian. Another item. Another...
Mr. Chairman.
No. There are two appointments we did not address.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I, too, would like to say, I think that Mr. Collins has done a great job since he's been here, and certainly listening to him tonight. My... What I'd love to do is say, I'll give you all the people you need because I think that, you know, the results will be terrific. I think my problem for, at this point for me, is that there's a new group coming in here that's going to have to make some decisions about where they're going to go with the budget. We supported, I supported, four additional teachers at the high school earlier this year to run an alternative program. And I just don't want to keep going down a road where, at the end of the year, there's going to be this huge budget gap because we've put staff in that I think we need and leave a situation for the next group. So, I mean, I'm trying to be very cautious with saying, "Okay, we're on the hook for the Pell annex." I get that. And certainly, you know, I've felt all along that, you know, Pell School probably needed some more people in there to clean that building. It's hard to keep up with that, so I'm, you know, I can understand that piece of it. But I think that the end solution for staffing in this district, when it comes to custodial staff and maybe some of the others, is it's going to have to be phased in over time, and we can't correct all the things that we need to correct in one year because it's going to create a huge budget problem for next year. It's going to, you know, we've had a number of years that we have not gotten money from the city, and so you can't just turn that ship around on a dime. It's going to take some time to get some of these things back in place, and that's why I'm hesitant. Not, I have every, I respect everything he just said about what should be done at Pell School, and I appreciate all the work he's done, and I've seen the difference since he's been here, and I hope that we go forward with a similar arrangement and we're able to do those kind of things. But I'm, at this point, not willing to put the school department any further into a staffing situation where it's going to, where we may not have the money. And that's, and I'm, like, one step from the door, and that's what I'm not going to do. If I was going to stay here, then maybe I'd do something different, but I'm not going to be here.
Mrs. Gaines.
I would move that we hold the Thompson and Rogers' second shift custodian positions, that we table those to the next meeting.
Second. Second is table. Okay, that's not a debatable issue, so we have to take a vote on that. All those in favor of tabling it, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. I think that takes... We didn't really finish it, but we ended the discussion on 6.2. Go on to 6.3, Home Instruction, Superintendent School.
You have the recommendations in front of you for home instruction, and you also have the number as is usually filled out as far as the military, non-military families set up apply.
Let me ask you guys a question. I asked the superintendent the other day. What, did they get a diploma from Rogers High School, their home school?
Did who?
The home school? Did the kid?
No, not from Rogers.
No.
No.
Okay. Number two, do they count against us in terms of people who don't graduate?
No. No.
Do they?
No, because they're not enrolled with us.
No.
I'm not supposed to answer.
They're not ours.
I just thought it was, it just occurred to me when I heard about this home schooling. I said, "Where are these kids? All this accounting?" But I guess...
They have their own curriculum, their own organization.
And they get a degree from, or they get a diploma from their own organizations? Is that correct?
Right.
Yeah, okay. We go to Policies. Dr. Flowers.
Going down to Policies now?
8.1, I guess.
No, you skipped crossing guards.
No, you still have...
I'll see how the Bible book is...
Discussion item seven.
7.2.
7.1.
There is no backup for it.
7.1 or 7.2, Colleen, if not, go on.
I know. 7.1 and 7.2. There is no backup for it. So the first one is Middletown, Newport.
Are you going to Policies now?
No.
No, no, you still have discussion.
Becky's going to give us a quick update.
There's two items under 7.1. The first one is Middletown and Newport High Schools, next steps, and I'm to report out on that. That I know in the past, there was, and there was, on Homecoming Day for our schools, there was a pep rally, and there's been a lot of discussion about the pep rally and the effigy. And the high school principal from Middletown, I know, is reaching out, and I believe to Mrs. Gaines. She's reached out to you, and the two communities are going to come together and have a discussion about what we can learn from this and how we can come together as two schools. So we feel this can be taught, turned into a learning lesson for many of us.
Okay.
Second one.
Now, 7.2, help me out because I don't have any paperwork in front of me.
This is concerning, there was, it's been an ongoing safety issue that was pointed out to us last year concerning the crosswalk at the intersection of Hillside and Admiral Calphus. And it did not have, at that time, had no special markings. It was determined by our crossing guard, who, you know, was very upset about the number of near misses that were occurring because of people turning left, and even though they were trying to stop the traffic, there were still people turning left into, you know, the crosswalk. And it's, that crosswalk also has a sun problem, glare problem, and it's got fast traffic. It's a state road. So we had to work with, I think we would have been much better off if we were working with the city, but we had to work with the state, and there's just a lot of, you know, things to go through to get this done. But I'll just say that finally, everyone came together. I mean, we got 90% of it done, except for the most important thing, which is a timed light where everybody stops. So now, when you push the button, everyone's going to stop at that light, and the walkers are going to go, which is going to help our Thompson kids, too, because we don't have a crossing guard there. And believe it or not, we do have some kids that walk, or because they're late, or because of... So anyway, we, through the state, I just want to, you know, through our state, they came through, and they got it done last week. Someone pointed out, we are paying $150 a day very quickly here, having to cover it with police officers because we felt that that was the only safe way to make sure that these kids were crossing. So just really good news. It's done, and, you know, and we want to thank the city people that helped and the state people that helped get this done.
Congratulations for getting it done.
If anybody rides through there, you'll notice there are school crossing warnings on Admiral Calphus coming both ways. You'll see the new lights, pedestrian lights on every point of the four-point corner.
And no left turns either.
Right.
No right on reds.
Okay. I think I'm back on course. I have 8.1. Ms. Dr. Flowers.
Just two, well, they're not minor, but very simple changes. Policy number 1510, organization, the organizational meeting of the school committee, it always was on the second Tuesday in January. Now it's in December because of the question that was passed on Election Day to have our inauguration on December 1st.
So move.
Second.
A discussion? All favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And then the next one is similar. It is, let's open it up here just to find the right sentence.
1530.
It's 1530, right, and it's all the appointments of the subcommittees, and it was after the regular meeting of, instead of January, it's the December meeting after the election of the school committee members.
So move.
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Does this have to have two readings or no?
It does. Second reading's after next.
It's the next meeting.
That's it.
Thompson Middle School, 8.3. Dr. Powers requested the following item be placed on the agenda for the correction. Please see the attached letter from Osiris Gonzalez and Jamie Crowley, Tiverton Middle School Principal. I thank you both.
What?
Thompson Middle School Principal. Wow.
You want to put that Viking shirt on?
That was back in, when was that? When am I getting the time? I know. I know. So that's where I first started out for those history buffs here. I started in that district. All right. Thompson Middle School, Principal of Thompson Middle School. Thank you both for being here. I know it's been a long night.
So, Mr. Chairman, you have in front of you information regarding a request from Mr. Crowley for technology at Thompson Middle School. And so I'd like to make a motion that we fund Mr. Crowley's request for technology and transfer funds in the amount of $99,437.50 from the Thompson Middle School Construction Fund.
Second.
59 cents.
Is it 59?
They made motion and seconded.
I'll make up the dime.
Okay. Anybody want a further discussion on that item?
We might want to hear from Thompson, from Thompson. Mr. Crowley.
While he's walking up, too.
I was calling him Mr. Thompson. Yes.
You have to go. While he's going up, I just wanted to say that I checked with NPF today, and we have funds that are left over from the Thompson campaign, and that's $136,848.79. And that money is put into, this is private money. This is the, I shouldn't call it private. This, you just had a funny face there. This is the money that was left over from the campaign to raise money for technology at Thompson. It has been put into a CDD.
It's an investment with Cargan Financial, and the interest from that money...
Every three years.
Every three years goes to Thompson.
And that money will not be available. Last year, $7,000 went out, and it will not be available again for two more years. So that's, I just wanted to let you all know where we were at that, so.
That's a different fund.
It's a different fund, but I just want, because I know there's going to be a question about, do we have money in that account?
Yeah, so I won't be able to address those types of questions, but I can tell you what the situation is at my school. So we're talking projection units, the thing projecting the image right now. So most in our building were installed when the building was renovated in '02. So you're talking 12 years ago. They are dying. And in my position, this is what I'm receiving. I'd say biweekly. Jamie, my projection unit is dying or is dead. I can't see anything on the screen. Kids can't see it. We are moving to the digital age. Everything that I do is now projected. What do I do? So, so far, what we have done is piecemeal this issue. It causes a couple of problems. I can never guarantee to the teachers when their units will be installed, when they'll arrive, and I don't know when the next one is going to die because they're all dying now. So it's a major headache for me, and when we just simply say, "Okay, we'll replace five here, five here," then I'm tasked with the issue of, okay, who do I get to first? Who's second, third? We literally do that, and no one likes it. And in this particular case, I would like that, to use that money to replace all of them in the building, or most of them. I don't think we'll be able to hit all of them, but clearly the ones that are currently not usable will be replaced, and all of the ones that will die this year. And history tells me that will probably be 15 to 20 during this year. Another issue is, if we keep these units, the bulb cost replacement is $600 to $400 per bulb. Some of these bulbs have lasted three months, some six months, and that also drives us crazy because it's a lot of money, and it's wasteful.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
First of all, thank you, Dr. Powers, for putting this on the... So people probably fall over and say they're not going to support this thing going forward, but I went down to City Hall, looked at both accounts. So we have $164,000 in the Thompson account, and we have $300,000 in the school capital reserve account, except our gymnastics, all the deductions over the years, and where we're at with that. The $306,000, probably going to deduct $86,000 from that very soon for our deficit from last year. So that will leave us with about $64,000 in the Thompson account. The reason I will support this is, for two reasons. One thing, when Dr. Schumacher read that thing to the Education Week, it said, the quote was, "To provide education with the tools they need if you succeed." That was a quote you read from that thing there. So these are tools that they need. So to provide them, they don't have it. My reservation is that this school committee had an line item for this, $87,000, and we cut it by $50,000. I was probably in there for your, some of your stuff. So we cut it by $50,000. So shame on me for, one who pays attention to budgets, for not recognizing, going forward, when the line item is cut, I want to know exactly what's in that line item, every cent of it going forward. But I will support with it.
Thank you.
It's been made in motion, I mean, made and seconded. Any further discussion? If not, all favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you.
Thank you. And I hate to call you up again, but 8.5 has to do with playground matting and fiber.
That's it.
That's it.
Yep.
Right.
So when the playgrounds at Pell were still, there were no matting put under the swings and the devices, and if you go by there now, you can see everything's just eroding away. Again, it was just never part of the scope of the project. So the cost associated with that would be to go back in, rake everything out, smooth it out, put the mats in, compile some chips, and put the swings to a safety height, which I think is about 16 inches above the chips. And the contractor is the same contractor that installed the playground.
I entertain a motion.
So move.
Second.
Further discussion?
Ed, you did check that that was not part of...
Was not part of the scope. Was not part.
Shame on us.
So is that something that the architects overlooked?
I wasn't involved in the project, so I don't know if it was overlooked, it was taken out. I just know it was never part of what Newport purchased.
Okay.
I think it was part of that vetting that we had to do when we were over budget.
I think there was a lot of value engineering that went on with the project, so wherever that is.
And it never got put back.
Yep.
So, also, we didn't get this one either, on, on the, wasn't included. But I did hear it from, I think it was just a mistake of the bad.
It was an oversight.
An oversight. But when I looked at, but Bobby told me over the phone, there's, there's, a, a, part of this money is going to go for the spreading of that mulch. Can we possibly, like, I, you know, I've been involved in many of these spreading things with elementary schools. And we get the community together, and they come with their rakes, and, and we dig it up where it needs to be dug up, and we spread it. This has happened at all the elementary schools. Because they're asking, how much, Bobby, for this?
$2,500.
Twenty, $2,500 to spread it.
Okay, normal, normal situations, if that's all we were doing, I'd agree with you. But the area has to be cleaned out, it has to be leveled, the mats have to go back on, spiked in, chips need to go back on there. So you're actually, actually asking if the community can work along with a contractor to get the job done.
No, just, the only part was just the spreading.
Yeah, but it's not, it, it.
Does it include more?
No, it's incorporated, look, when you look at it now, everything's like this. Everything got pushed aside. So everything's got to kind of be brought back, the mats got to go down, then everything's got to be put on top of that. So it's kind of like one job, but I asked them to, to separate everything out. And they're the ones delivering the chips. So it'd be like having them go there, push everything out of the way, get the mats down, deliver the chips, watch everyone spread it out, and then kind of adjust the height of everything like that. And I think you're, you're running into a situation where you're going to have people from the community try to work with a contractor.
And boy, your guarantees. What about the payments? Do we still have, we still have money in the fund, in the building fund?
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just not sure the amount.
Yeah, I think we have enough for that.
Dr. Flowers?
Is this on both, all the playgrounds?
Yes.
Okay, but how long?
Underneath the swings.
Okay, but how long would it take to do that?
Well, it's probably half a day, a day's worth of work. But if it gets any colder, they're going to have to wait till the frost is done and come back and do it.
I was just wondering, I mean, this is something that can be done during the school year.
They should be able to bang it out if it's approved before the frost actually settles in.
Okay.
I slipped on ice today.
So I, I can't support this the way this is. It is broken down here, by the way. If you have it in front of you, it says the swing mats is $4,200. The insulation is $3,000 rounded off, and surfacing is putting that all together. The last part says dropping off wood fiber in three play areas and raking onto the spot. That's just $2,500. I put in 14 yards of mulch, my yard alone. I'll do the whole damn thing myself.
But it's integrated, that doesn't.
It's not integrated, they dropped this off, this is the last section. It's the last thing, nobody's going to, they lay the mat down, they're doing all the surfacing, all the insulation, all the swing mats, and then receive and spread wood fiber within three play areas.
All right, so when you look at the area now, it's all depressed. You have to rake it out and smooth it, and bring it to about 18 to 19 inches underneath where the swings are. Then you install the mats, you stake them in, then you cover back over with an inch to make up, and I'm pretty sure it's 16 inches. That's the project, that's, it's a whole project. It's not, we're going to put the mats in and then just spread a bunch of stuff around. There's other things that go into that, so.
So I would suggest that.
Some of this goes in before the mat.
Yes, yes.
That next, going from here on out, we could maybe, once a year, when there's a spreading project, then we can come in and do it, because it's a great.
Look, when, every year, every year, the staff should be able to go out there, order some wood chips, get it dropped off in the summer, and periodically just go there and rake it out. We're in a situation now where we need some mats installed, and we just don't, we don't have enough to do that. And you want, I'm sorry, one other thing. You want this all done to standards, too, right?
Yes.
Motion's been made, seconded, Mrs. Gaines asked us to move it, so I'll take a vote at this point. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Arden, 8.7.
How about 8.6?
This is service contract for Pell. Pell is, has a complex HVA system with controls on it. We don't have the capabilities of doing the preventive maintenance on that that needs to be done. So presently, in front of you, you have a contract for, I think, $11,000 or $12,000 a year, with a third-year option for a rollover. The good thing about ONA is, one, they're on the NPA. The second thing is, they have people on their staff that are familiar with the Honeywell system. So they'll come out quarterly, they'll have a control person, they'll have a mechanical person onsite at the same time to go through the maintenance. So we're not left in a situation where the control guy comes out, and he's saying, there's a problem, you need to get the mechanical guy there. Can you get him there, and we'll go through all that. The other thing is, there's a whole list on the back of what they're going to do on a quarterly or semi-annual basis. The filter changes, and then the last page, some things are semi-annually, and that's mostly the stuff in the kitchen, the exhaust hoods and everything. A system like that needs professional, professional maintenance done to it, so.
Okay, entertain a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Further discussion?
So, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Hill.
This is Mr. Phil's point, am I correct, Mr. Phil?
Yeah, me, they're training.
Right, so now we're going to hire somebody to do this, which we should have done initially.
So better late than never.
You know what, he's, this, when the building was turned over, there should have been a contract put on it right away, but there was not. There was not. And we don't have, the, the guy there has been trained on some basic things there. We don't, you need a licensed HVAC guy and a licensed control guy to maintain that. So, correct, it should have been done right away, it wasn't.
We had a similar program at, at Thompson. When the building was turned over, we had professional maintenance crew.
Yep.
Here, a motion down this, move the question, all favor?
Aye.
Last contract is, we're, we're in a situation right now where, one, because of health reasons, we're losing the plumber. He's just not in a lot anymore. The other thing is, we don't have, we have no maintenance contracts, so we have nothing established where we can pull on anybody to come and fix us something when it happens. We're in a position now where something breaks and we got to kind of scramble around. And then it's either done on the emergency, or we try to go get three quotes. What this contract does, it provides any trade, any time, any place thing. So it's a bank of hours that the system can use to address anything that goes wrong. Again, Arden's on the NPA, they have a few, full menu of anywhere from a plumber to a HVAC guy, to a controller, to a balancer. And you can pretty much pull on that any way you want, until someone else comes in and back, back at me, and sets up some bids for specific services throughout the district. I think this is just a good way to get you through the summer.
Through the winter.
The win, yeah, through the winter, through the summer, to the summer.
That was my next question.
In case you have anything that needs to get fixed.
How long is this contract?
You can carry it over, so if you only use 80 hours, or whatever, you just roll them over to next year.
So it's $11,000 for the 80 hours?
For the 100 hours, 100 hours of service.
I guess I need a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Further discussion on that item? Yes, but.
I have some concerns, do we have this $25,000 in the budget? Well, from the, both of them, from both of them, one year. If you take the last one for one year, and you take this one for one year, it's $25,000 roughly.
Well, the other one, you already passed.
The 12,000 was.
I can ask both times, same question.
The 12,000, when I came here, Paul had originally budgeted 12,000 for maintenance contract for Pell. So you're under that.
So do we have this in the budget, Joan?
Yes, both budgeted, yes.
Both these things are budgeted, they're not, non-budget items?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
All favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Now, 8.8 is what I've requested. You've established a subcommittee for pre-K. We've been meeting over about three years, and I've taken sort of the lead people, put them on the committee, and asked for your approval.
I move that we accept these, but I, I, I move we accept the recommended candidates.
Second? I need a second.
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 Okay, may I speak? We're looking, Charlie, at changing that designation from pre-K to early childhood. Okay? Pre-K is very definitive. In Newport, pre-K is that year immediately before kindergarten. And we're looking, this committee is looking at earlier ages as well as that last year before kindergarten. So we will have, we're looking to establish an early childhood subcommittee. And I would see this as wrapping into that. Would you agree?
I, I look at what I've got in my computer, I've got pages and pages of directories of reprints and so on. The term pre-K is poorly defined, I guess, but it does, in a lot of people's mind, extend from birth up to kindergarten. And that's where the conventional language seems to be today. I would, I would have this discussion with Dr. Flowers this morning. I, I would strongly suggest we state what's current terminology, which is pre-K.
Well, we're going to have to define it in such a way that it doesn't, it doesn't pull in our pre-K students. We have pre-K students.
I wouldn't think it would. I wouldn't think it would. We're not, we're not running it at school, we're just, it's a committee.
What, 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 the last convention, just to share, they call it PK instead of pre-K. They, they call it PK.
What's the P for?
I think for, before kindergarten, pre, same thing, but they don't call it pre, they call it PK.
I don't care what you call it.
I just, I'm just letting you know what they told me at the convention. So it would be all-inclusive.
All right. All in favor?[1750.56]